End 2020 meeting of the Pacifica Planning Commission. And before we proceed to the agenda, there were some preliminary notes I want to share with you all that pertain to the way that the meeting will be conducted this evening. The meeting will be conducted pursuant to the provisions of the Governor's Executive Order N2520 and N2920, which suspends certain requirements of the Brown Act in pursuant to the orders of the Health Officer of Sematillo County. And as this meeting is necessary so that the city can conduct necessary business, it is permitted under the orders as an essential governmental function. Commissioners, the Assistant City Attorney and City Staff essential to this meeting will be video teleconferencing into the meeting, and there will be no physical location open to the public. The public can observe the meeting while sheltering at home via the Zoom link as the primary means of participation, or via the Cable Channel 26 or live stream broadcasts as alternate methods of viewing the meeting. Participation via the Zoom link will enable the meeting to be observed alive and will enable the public to speak during the public comments period. The Zoom link was published in the meeting agenda. Live public comments are being accepted at this meeting in place of emailed public comments. Public comments may be provided live by members of the public utilizing the Zoom link to participate in the meeting. Utilize the raise hand function in the Zoom application on a computer, a smartphone, or tablet, or else enter *9 to raise your hand if you're dialing in by phone. Please ensure your name is correctly entered in the Zoom profile so that city staff may properly identify you when it's your turn to speak. Those dialing in by phone will be called to speak by the last four digits of their phone number as shown in the Zoom interface. Okay, with those preliminary matters dealt with, then we'll go ahead and move on to the agenda. I'll ask that we start with a roll call, please.
Commissioner Berman.
President.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Present.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Present.
Commissioner Godwin.
Present.
Commissioner Lille.
Present.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Present.
Commissioner Howser.
Thank you for that. We're going to move then to the salute to the flag, and I'm going to ask the Deputy Director Murdoch, go ahead and lead us in the salute to the flag, please.
Thank you, Chair. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice for all.
Thank you Deputy Director Murdoch for leading us in the salute to the flag, and we will then move to the administrative business portion of the agenda. The first item of administrative business is to approve the order of agenda. Is there a motion to approve the order of agenda? Commissioner Berman.
I move that we approve the order of agenda.
Thank you. I've got a motion to approve the order of agenda. Is there a second to that motion, please? Commissioner Ferguson.
I second the motion.
So we have a motion and we have a second to approve the order of agenda. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Mr. Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. The next item of administrative business is approval of our minutes of meeting for July 20th of 2020. And I would like to ask if there's a motion to approve the minutes of July 20th, 2020. Commissioner Big Stick.
I move we approve the minutes of July 20th, 2020.
Thank you. Is there a second to Commissioner Big Stick's motion? I will, Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of July 20th of 2020. Can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Next item of administrative business is designation of liaison to the City Council meeting of 11:23. And this pertains to the appeal of the Vista Mar Residential Development that's in the vicinity of Hickey Boulevard and Monterey Road. I remember looking at an email, maybe it was earlier today or perhaps in the last couple of days. Mr. Murdoch, I believe there may be another thing that you're hoping to get a liaison for.
That's correct. We also on November 9th, or forgive me, yeah, November 9th, we have the 1300 Ganman Appeal at City Council as well. It didn't make it on the agenda, my apologies. And then also to confirm the planning commission's liaison previously designated as Commissioner Big Stick for the Sharp Park specific plan item, the City Council will be taking that up at a special meeting on November 17th. So just affirming that the Chair still desires Commissioner Big Stick to be that liaison.
Insofar as Commissioner Big Stick remains willing and able to do it, I suppose there are, at least I'd want to confirm with Commissioner Big Stick that that still works for him.
I remain willing and able to do it. It works for me.
Thank you. So maybe we'll take these one at a time. How about the November 9th matter? That's the next coming up. Is there anybody who is able to cover that matter? Commissioner Godwin.
I am able to attend on the 9th.
Is there anybody else who is interested in doing that or otherwise feeling strongly about it? Otherwise, I think by acclamation, we will have Commissioner Godwin designated as the liaison. Okay, excellent. So Commissioner Godwin, thank you. We'll go ahead and ask you to serve as liaison. I guess I should double check. Is that the kind of thing we need a roll call vote on? Or is it enough for us just to?
It's the Chair's prerogative. Thank you.
I think we'll just go ahead then and ask Commissioner Godwin to do it and thank him for his willingness to do so. That'll take us then to the November 23rd appeal of the Vista Mar Residential Development. Do we have any volunteers to serve as liaison for that matter? I think I'll go ahead and, Commissioner Godwin.
I'm able to do that one too unless somebody else wants it.
I appreciate your willingness to volunteer to do it. I'll go ahead and per my prerogative designate you on behalf of the commission to serve as our liaison. Thank you. Great. Again, thank you for picking those things up, Commissioner Godwin and Commissioner Big Stick. That then will take us to oral communications. And this is the portion of the agenda that's available to the public to address the planning commission on any issue within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission that is not on the agenda. Time allowed for any speaker will be three minutes. Go ahead then and ask Mr. Murdoch if there are any speakers under oral communications.
There are none at this time, Chair Nibblin.
Okay, well, we'll wait for another, oh, I don't know, five or 10 seconds or so just to see if anybody pops up their hand. Otherwise, we'll move on.
Yes, one individual has raised a hand identified as Tom.
Okay, Tom, why don't you go ahead and address this under oral communication?
Hey, I'm new to this whole Zoom thing. I'm a general contractor working on behalf of, in. Hello?
Yeah, Tom, why don't you go ahead and start over? I think we lost a little bit of what you had to say.
No, no, no. You know, I'm working on behalf of, can you hear me?
I can, yes.
I'm working on behalf of a client of mine, Kat Duarez, who lives on 246 Sterling. And I'm just curious on, you know, the process on what we need to do to keep her project moving forward so we can possibly build in the spring. You know, she's proposing to build a, another bedroom and bathroom and a roof deck. And it's west side of one. And we've run into numerous challenges with certain things. So I'm just curious on where we're at in that process. And then what do I need to do to keep the process moving forward? And I will end it at that right now.
Thank you for your comment. Of course, a public comment isn't a question and answer period, but we would, you know, we appreciate your comment and we of course direct you to staff who hopefully will be able to help to continue to move this project that you're working on forward.
And Chair, I'll just note that that item is on the agenda for tonight. And so the gentleman will have another opportunity to speak if he so desires, but the commission's taking up that project this evening.
Yes, it's actually the first item on our agenda, under the business of it, so. All right, well, good. Are there any other hands up, Mr. Murdoch?
I see none, Chair, thank you.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and close our communication. And I see that there are no consent items and no presentations. That remains the case?
Correct.
Okay, so we'll move on to continued public hearings. And the first continued public hearing that we have is the first item on our agenda, substantive business, and that's CDP 41519. This is file number 2019-033. As I said, it's a coastal development permit 41519 to construct a 245 square foot first story addition and 416 square foot second story addition to an existing one-story, 1,000-square-foot single-family residence with a one-car garage located on a 5,000-square-foot lot at 246 Sterling Drive. There we have it. The recommended CEQA action is a Class 1 categorical exemption pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15301. And staff's recommended action is to approve this project as conditioned. I'll go ahead and ask for a staff report for this item, please.
Good evening, planning commissioners and staff and other members of the public. I'm contract planner Anu Agarwal. The project before you involves the construction of a 245-square-foot first-story addition and 416-square-foot second-story addition to an existing one-story, 1,000-square-foot single-family residence with one-car garage. The addition would include a new dining area on the ground floor and an expansion and relocation of the floor plan of the second bedroom and bathroom to the new second story. The project also includes a second-story deck in the front. The existing building is located at a legal non-conforming setback of one foot from the left-side property line instead of the required five feet and includes a one-car garage instead of the two-car garage typically required for a single-family residence. However, the project would not increase the extent of the non-conformity with respect to the setback. And as it does not add a bedroom, it would not trigger the two-car garage requirement per code. The project site is a steeply sloping site which looks upward from the front of the property to the rear. It is 5,000 square feet in area, and it is located in the Coastal Commission's appeal jurisdiction. Per the PMC, the project requires planning commission approval of a coastal development permit prior to the issuance of a building permit. The planning commission must make two findings in order to approve the project. These findings pertain to the project's conformity with the city-certified local coastal land use plan and whether, if the development is located between the nearest road and the coastline, whether it is in conformity with the public recreation policies of Chapter 3 of the California Coastal Act. The project site is not located between the nearest road and the coastline, so the second finding does not apply to this project. Staff analysis pertaining to the first finding are detailed on page 57 to 59 of the agenda packet. These discussions discuss the consistency of the project with policies, the design review requirements, and implementation plans set forth in the local coastal land use plan. To encapsulate, the proposed residential addition would be undertaken in an area substantially developed with single-family homes and on an existing developed lot. It will be more than 1,700 feet from the nearest coastal access point and will, and the addition will be predominantly to the rear behind the existing residence and will be modest in size and scale. It is compatible with the existing character of the site and surrounding area and complies with all the applicable zoning regulations. Therefore, in staff's assessment, there is substantial evidence in the record to support planning commission approval of this permit. Accordingly, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution incorporated in the agenda packet pages 61 to 65, finding the project exempt from CEQA and approving the coastal development permit as condition. That concludes the staff report. I'm open to any questions if there are any.
Thank you, Ms. Agarwal. Are there any questions from Ms. Agarwal or other members of staff by the commission? Commissioner Berman.
I just have one question. Reading through the COAs, it looks like COA number six. I think it's on packet page 67. There's mention of a trash enclosure that would be needed at the property. I'm wondering if there's a precedent for that in the area? Do other single-family homes have literal trash enclosures? Or is it more of a best management practice to kind of just store your bins away from the public's eye?
No, the condition states that if it is stored outside, then it has to be fully contained and screened from public view within an approved enclosure. So if it is not stored outside, then that condition is moot in that sense that it will be screened from view if it is inside in any case.
And I think it's, Vice Chair Berman, I think it's also important to note the context within which we're reading this condition. I think typically you would read trash enclosure and think of it in a commercial context. This is really just describing the area enclosing the garbage and recycling and compost bins in a residential setting. And so it's not requiring a trash enclosure of a large sort you might expect to conceal a dumpster, for example. It's really ensuring that we make sure the trash bins are not in public view and that whatever area they're enclosed by is compatible architecturally with the main structure.
Okay, because I think it's just common throughout the city to not store the bins anywhere inside. I think it's more common for residents to place the bins like on their side alley, which would be screened just because it's not right in the front of the house. But I think, I know I've seen this condition before on other projects, and it's just a standard one. But I'm just wondering if in the future, the language could be more catered to the single-family home verbiage? But I just wanted to mention it.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. I had a question about condition of approval number 18, which comes after a couple of conditions that talk about putting sidewalk in. And then number 18 basically says the idea of putting sidewalk in is deferred. I mean, I was up there, so I understand that it may not be a neighborhood that's conducive toward putting in pedestrian improvement. But I thought maybe you could elaborate for a moment if there is any plan that there might be pedestrian improvement up there? Or if this is kind of a nod to the reality of what the living situation in that neighborhood is? And so there's kind of this deferral for probably longer than the foreseeable future.
Yes, thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. This condition or this sequence of conditions actually came up previously when we were continuing this public hearing. Vice Chair Berman inquired about it, actually. What we did with the conditions was impose the requirement and then reflective of the existing circumstances that you referenced, allow the applicant to defer installation of those improvements until such time as it makes more sense collectively along that street segment. There's currently no city program or project to install sidewalks in this area. And so it's typically been, I shouldn't say typically, but more recently been acceptable to the commission to defer those improvements until such time as more of them can be installed at the same time. And so that's the intent with this sequence of conditions of approval. The Public Works Department does keep record of these deferred improvement agreements and does have the ability to call them in, so to speak, at such time as installation of the public improvements would make sense. And these, the sidewalk in particular is required as part of the city's complete streets policy, which requires projects to plan for more than vehicular transportation, but all modes of transportation, including bicycle and pedestrian. And so that's why the city is looking to impose this requirement on development projects making significant improvements to a property.
Makes sense to me. Thank you very much.
Hey, Commissioner Berman, did you have another question or comment?
Yeah, thank you. For the record, I just wanted to appreciate Commissioner Big Stick's question because I did think about my comment that I've had on this project and other projects before regarding the deferment of the public sidewalk or even the construction of public sidewalk for very short frontage. I didn't ask it upfront today because I understand just from staff's previous responses to my question, the city stance on it. But I just wanted to state my support for Commissioner Big Stick's question.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I'm not seeing any other hands for the moment. I think what we could do then is go ahead and see if we have any comments from the public regarding this item.
Chair Nibblin, would it please the Chair to have the applicant make a presentation?
Of course, sorry about that. I guess the applicant then has 10 minutes, up to 10 minutes, to present anything they care to with respect to the project, also having the option to sort of reserve any portion of that 10 minutes to respond to any comments that we might get from the public. So I'll go ahead then and ask the applicant if the applicant would like to speak on the matter. You know what? We can't hear you, sir.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, indeed. Please go ahead.
So hi, I'm Dave Hersel. I'm the building designer on this project. And I've had looked through all of the, the results that came down from planning relative to this project. And I basically, I'm here at the moment, it looks as though it is finding generally with approval throughout. So I'm just here to answer any questions that anyone may have about this particular project. We, it was intentional to, to basically keep it pretty small, keep it pretty modest, keep it entirely in keeping with the scale and the nature of the house, but take the sort of funky bedroom addition that was put on at some point in the past and take that off and rebuild it in a way that makes actually a proper bedroom and proper kind of access and real rooms and real windows and real egress and so on. And so we were just essentially working with everything that was there, certainly with the owner Catherine Duarez, just to make sure that it essentially kind of just makes the existing house work better. That was our intent, and I think we succeeded. I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hersel. We may get to that point a little later in the proceeding. So we'll hope that you'll stick around just in case we do have some questions. So having heard from the applicant, then I'll ask Mr. Murdoch whether or not we have any members of the public who are looking to comment on this matter.
We have one hand raised, Chair, by Tom.
Tom, please, please go ahead.
No, basically Dave just reiterated what I was about to say. And then we're doing a modest remodel to a very funky old hunting cabin because those, those old homes used to be hunting cabins. And, you know, I just am hopefully optimistic that we can push this thing through and the homeowner can have a proper bedroom and bathroom for her daughter to live in. And basically, you know, unfortunately, you know, the street there is very narrow and it's non-conforming. So we're going to run through some certain challenges as well. So I'm up to hearing your suggestions on that. But other than that, you know, Dave hit it off pretty well. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murdoch, are there any other public comments that you can see right now?
I don't see any other hands raised, Chair.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and close the public comment portion of this consideration of this item and bring it back then to the commissioners for any other comments and deliberation. Anybody who cares to lead off, please, please do. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. It all seems fairly straightforward to me. As near as my eye can tell, everything seems in keeping with the neighborhood and the house as it currently is. And so I have no problem in approving it. This one's a fairly, fairly easy way to begin the evening, I think.
Well, perhaps if you wanted to make a motion, we'd certainly entertain it and see if there's a second for it.
Certainly, let me pull that up. So I will be happy to move that the planning commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, approve the coastal development permit CDP-415-19 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval and exhibit A, and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. So again, we've got Commissioner Big Stick's motion, which is essentially the, exactly the motion that's set forth on packet page 60. Is there a second to the motion? Commissioner Berman.
I second the motion.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Big Stick and a second by Commissioner Berman. Can we get a roll call vote, please, on this matter?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. Good luck with your project. So then we'll move on to new public hearings. And these are two of them, in fact, or actually three that we have. The first of them is item number two on our agenda, and that's file number 2020-015, annual review of use permit UP4115 for a 711 store at 700 Hickey Boulevard. The recommended CEQA action is that this matter is exempt pursuant to CEQA Guideline Section 15378. And the recommended action of staff is to adopt the attached resolution that's included in our packet. I'll go ahead and ask for staff report.
Good evening, Honorable Chair and Commissioners. Deputy Director of Planning Christian Murdoch. The item before you is the third annual review of the 711 convenience store located at 700 Hickey Boulevard. The City Council approved the development and operation of the store on appeal in 2015. As explained in the staff report, staff's inspection of the 711 store found it to be substantially in compliance with the conditions of approval imposed on the project by the city. In particular, the alcohol sales area is compliant with the applicable space limitations. Furthermore, the police chief has analyzed calls for service attributable to the 711 and has found that it is not a significant source of police department activity. Code enforcement staff also indicated that no complaints have been received about the store during the time since the last annual review. While staff found the store to be substantially in compliance with the conditions of approval for its development and operation after a site inspection on October 27th, 2020, staff did find that the store was not in compliance with condition number 16 at the time of inspection. Staff found issues with the rusted gate, cigarette butts, dirty store entry apron, bare patches of mulch in planter areas, a collection of trash in a planter area, overgrown weeds behind the trash enclosure, and peeling paint on the monument sign. Staff informed 711 of these findings the same day. 711 notified staff today that they had addressed these issues, and staff confirmed the issues had been addressed during a reinspection this afternoon. Based on staff's initial inspection findings and the findings of staff's reinspection that determined all deficient items had been satisfactorily addressed, staff recommends that the planning commission find the operation of the 711 store at 700 Hickey Boulevard to be substantially in compliance with the conditions of approval imposed on the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdoch. Are there any questions of Deputy Director Murdoch from staff? Or I'm sorry, from members of the commission? Or I'm sorry, from members of the commission? Commissioner Berman?
I'm wondering, was, because I believe this project had an annual review last year, correct?
Correct.
And were there any items out of compliance during that annual review?
Yes, there were similar property maintenance items, as noted this year. A couple of them changed, you know, some, a couple were acceptable, a couple were added, but generally the same types of, of issues.
Okay. And then it's great to hear that the, the maintenance issues were already addressed. I really appreciate that, but for the sake of just answering my curiosity question, if the maintenance issues were not already addressed, what's the typical timeline for maintenance check-in besides the annual reviews? Is there like, they need to address it within a month, two weeks? What's typical?
Sure. We try to establish a positive relationship with our residential and commercial property owners in town. We have a voluntary compliance process that we strive for where folks upon notification from the city address these kinds of issues without formal issuance of a notice of violation, for example. I would say a couple of weeks is probably on the, the short end. Sometimes it takes a little bit longer for different property owners to muster their maintenance companies. You know, a month or two is probably a reasonable timeframe. After that, you know, if we're following up and we don't get a good response, we may transition into the notice of violation phase after a couple of months of efforts with a property owner.
Okay, thank you. Good to know.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Big Stick?
Thank you, Chair. Stoving off Commissioner Berman's question, I was wondering if consistently we, well, this is I think only the second review process, but if this winds up becoming a consistent concern, that number 16 keeps coming up, at some point, is there a penalty mechanism or a mechanism by which maybe there's a little bit more scrutiny on the, the business?
So at this point, the City Council approval provided for annual reviews, there was no fixed number as there are for some of our other projects where they indicate one or two annual reviews. So I think that may have been a consideration of the, the fact that the City Council expected to be interested in this project for a while. You may recall last year, based on the overall positive operation of the facility, we did recommend amending the condition to provide for one more annual review and then to terminate the annual reviews. The commission at that time did not feel that that was the advisable course of action and you'll note that we did not propose that this year. With all that said, again, we're evaluating for substantial compliance, not strict compliance with the operation and the conditions of approval. And so I would say in general, across the range of conditions of approval, these probably do not register a level of significance to take further sanctions against the property owner or the, the business operation in particular, because they're responsive to requests for addressing these items. The real sanction that the city has at its disposal, if there are serious concerns, is the use permit revocation process. It's a separate process. It's a, a very significant effort and it's one that we would not advise the city to undertake lightly. There's been no indication based on our inspections since this store opened that there's anything approaching significance to initiate the use permit revocation process at this time, but that is the city's ultimate option to address or affect this operation or to cease it. The commission also does have the authority to amend the conditions of approval under this annual review provision and so if there were some aspect that the commission felt like it could better address with a different condition of approval, that also is an option provided, sufficient public notices is provided and we consider it at a public hearing.
And when I was visiting the site today, I appreciated that it looked like things were pretty well cleaned up compared to what was in the staff report. Just for the moment mildly concerned that, you know, there's a recurring theme, but it's, it's a very mild concern for the moment. I noticed that we have a representative from PPD with us tonight. Is he able to is Captain Glasgow able to speak on the police report and the staff report?
Captain Glasgow, if you wanted to go ahead and, you know, share any, any reflections you might have in response to Commissioner Big Stick's question, that'd be great.
Yeah, great. Thank you for having me, Chair, a fellow commissioner, city staff and community members. I'm Captain Bill Glasgow, commander of our field services division, which is relative basically our patrol division with the police department. So in kind of following up on Commissioner's Big Stick's question as it relates to the 711 up on Hickey, the police department overwhelmingly did not notice any community safety concerns, any quality of life issues, and currently does not draw any unreasonable law enforcement resources upon that business based on research that's conducted and that's outlined in Chief Stidl's memo to staff.
Specifically, I remember that last time this was before us, there were some heightened alcohol concerns. And it, it looks reflected in the report that those concerns aren't here and I haven't so far seen any letters from the public like we had the last time around. I was just wondering if you happen to know if any ABC sting operations have been conducted between them then and now, or you know, approximately how frequently between then and now your staff has looked into whether alcohol sales specifically has been an issue.
We have not noted any alcohol beverage control violations at that establishment.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. That's all. Thank you. That's all the questions I have for now.
Thank you, Captain Glasgow. Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Let's see here. I guess then what we will do is, not seeing any additional hands, we'll go ahead then and move on to the portion of the proceedings where we'll hear from the, from the applicant, the business owner, if there is a representative in fact of the business owner.
Yeah, thank you, Chair. This item's a bit unique in that we don't have an applicant. So we've typically taken the public input at this phase for these types of annual reviews as general public comment. Perhaps to the 711 representative either at the beginning or the end, perhaps so he could respond to any issues raised by the public if there are any.
Okay, well, why don't we proceed that way then? We'll just go ahead and hear from any members of the public who wish to address us on that matter, if there are any.
I see no hands raised right now.
Wait a few more seconds.
All right, there's one hand raised by Betty Duran.
Ms. Duran, did you want to go ahead and address us?
Am I on?
Yes, ma'am, you are.
Good evening. I hope that you have received my emails up to date. I'm going to speak rather quickly because I have several items I wish to cover. I'm not going to cover alcohol at all this year. However, I would like to thank Christian for providing all of the documentation necessary, but I have some comments. On page 81 of your packet, item number five, we need, my, my group needs a copy of the landscape plans. We asked for it last year and we never received it. Regarding number 16, it speaks of the good neighbor plan, but no copy is provided for council's benefit. That would be important to include for next year. Regarding also two items that were not included, conditions of, of approval, item number 57 is missing and 62. I'm going to read them to you and you'll understand the significance. Numbers 57, applicants should, shall send a letter to 711 corporate headquarters emphasizing the need for corporate involvement in the oversight of all 711s. I don't think this has happened. We've never seen the letter. We've asked for it. It has never been provided. Condition 57 has never been met. Condition 62 should be included also. Prior issuance of certificate, excuse me. Applicants shall prepare and submit for the planning director review and approval of a good neighbor plan based on 711's established template. The good neighbor plan shall include prescriptive measures for maintenance. So this is important and it should be included and it isn't. Condition 57 is something that Tina Weismeister concluded that would be important because sometimes you have a franchisee system, the corporate will come in and get all the land entitlements and then agree to the conditions, but they're not often relayed to the franchisee. I'm not sure what the problem is with the landscaping, but it continues to be a problem. If you look at the photos on pages 105 through 112, at least six of those 11 photos deal with landscaping. It's still, we want the photo that I provided to you earlier in the email that I sent to you. It's never looked like that. It doesn't have any trees. And I also sent you prior to this emails about the chevron that was there. You can see it's an entirely different type of landscaping, but the point is that it was neat and well maintained. Again, this is the third year that we complain as a community about the landscaping. Can we get it correct? Can you help us out with this? Can you do something to amend this conditions that, about the landscaping? It would be greatly appreciated by this neighborhood. I'm the contact person. I agreed to stay on this, no matter how long it took to get it corrected. I appreciate you listening to me this evening. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Duran. Mr. Murdock, are there any other public comments on this item?
I see no other hands raised right now, Chair.
All right, we'll go ahead then and close the public, well, the public comment portion of this matter and we'll bring it back to the commission for any further comments or deliberation. Commissioner Big Stick?
Chair, before we go further, is there no representative from 711 present at our meeting tonight?
I didn't, don't understand that there were any hands, further hands raised.
Yes, there's, there's a few of us on right now. There's the owner and then a couple of us from 711 corporate as well.
Okay, well, we can do one of two things. I mean, no one's suggesting you need to comment at this point. On the other hand, we know you're here so that if there are questions that commissioners have, we can go ahead and direct them to to you or again, alternatively, if you want to make a comment, you're free to now.
Because I, I do have a couple of questions if they're not going to be making comments.
Okay, why don't you go ahead, Commissioner Big Stick? Maybe that's the most efficient one.
Thank you, Chair, and as well, I was up there and when it comes to landscaping, I did notice that it looked like there were actually some new plants installed and it looks like an effort had been made. So thank you to the representatives of 711 here tonight for taking care of that expeditiously. I did notice lots of little bits of trash and cigarette butts in the landscaped areas. And I understand that it's the nature of a very busy street corner that little bits and pieces fly where they do and land where they do. But I did want to ask you how often that area is picked up after, if there's like a daily schedule on that or what the policy is.
It should be done at least once a day. But I can, you know, I'm at the store weekly and the franchise owner is at the store basically every day. So if that's something that's been an issue, you know, we can get some more walks going, get some job assignments going and definitely be on the lookout for that during our next store visits. Oh, actually, she just texted me. So they said they, they walk it twice a day. So maybe there's, if there was a buildup, maybe there's a couple of areas where we're missing. We gotta be a little more diligent. But she does, she does it twice a shift or twice a day.
Okay, thank you. And as I said, I appreciate the nature of that location. My follow-up to that was that there were two garbage cans that I noticed on either side of the entrance and one of them had a receptacle for cigarette butts. And the other one did not have that same little bowl on the top of the trash can. I saw the spot for it, but it seemed to be missing the place where the cigarette butts would normally be collected. So I wanted to bring that to your attention and that might immediately help with some of those cigarette butts that wind up otherwise in the in the landscaped areas that's put in place.
Okay, yeah, that's no problem. We can take care of that.
Thank you very much. And then after that, I had a question for Deputy Director Murdock, if you'd maybe speak for a moment on Ms. Duran's concern about COAs 57 and 62. I vaguely seem to recall that maybe they were removed for some reason, but I, I can't remember exactly how that meeting went.
Sure. Please allow me a moment to pull up that that resolution.
Thank you.
So condition of approval number 57 and 62 and some various others were actually removed from the annual report in response to Mr. Duran's comments last year about a number of conditions of approval which were there and we were showing compliance for, but in fact, were no longer relevant in the sense that the store was already operating. And many of them were prior to issuance of the building permit condition. So staff tried to strike the right balance and respond to the community's public input in this process. Maybe we didn't strike the right balance. That'll be for the commission to decide. Condition of approval number 57, again, I'm not sure the relevance ongoing standpoint of operation of this 711 store. It was a requirement to send a letter. We believe the letter was sent, but we agree, we've not been able to track down a copy of such letter. Nevertheless, the gentleman that spoke this evening and the lady that spoke the year prior and 711 individual representatives that spoke the year prior to that are all members of 711's corporate team, to the best of my understanding. And so the corporate structure is aware of this store and its operations and its annual review requirement. So I believe whatever the objective was of that condition of approval when it was imposed, 711's corporate representatives are aware of this store. And so I'm not sure what further discussion points staff can make on that. The condition of approval number 62 is a prior to issuance of a certificate of occupancy condition. The certificate of occupancy has been issued and so staff did not feel that that was a condition of approval that was relevant on an ongoing basis. This, the good neighbor plan was submitted to staff and reviewed and approved by the planning director and it does include detailed prescriptive measurable standards for property maintenance, including the elements that are indicated in this condition. So as far as staff's concerned, that's complied with and it was determined prior to certificate of occupancy and there's really not any more staff has on that either.
Thank you very much. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Berman?
In response to the community's concerns with the landscaping, I did notice that in the rendering that Ms. Duran provided, there are proposed trees. Deputy Director Murdock, can you remind us if the landscape plan that was approved with the project implements these trees?
From what I recall, the final landscape plan was reviewed and approved by staff and verified during inspection prior to commencement of operation of the store. I don't have the final landscape plan immediately available to confirm the specific species that were indicated. I think the commission might be aware that sometimes the renderings are a bit optimistic when they're submitted as part of a project review process. They're not always reflective of the final landscaping palette that's selected based on various site considerations such as planting area, foot traffic, ability to irrigate, sun exposure and so on. I believe a landscape architect did prepare the final landscape plan and made the best recommendations for the planting locations. And that was the plan that was reviewed and approved by city staff at that time.
Sure, and I would understand the slight variance in ground cover or species type, but a tree, I'd imagine, I just knowing from projects that have come through the commission previously and almost monthly, usually the trees that are being proposed are documented in the approved plans and in the staff report and I'm not sure if this, I know other cities have requirements where those trees have to be maintained and survive for a certain amount of years or else the, the owner needs to replace them. Especially because last year there were concerns with the aesthetic of the property. I'd be interested in diving deeper and looking into, are these trees, is this planting plan in compliance with what was actually approved for the project?
Sir, I'm happy to perform that follow-up to verify it. But what I can tell, they look like they're a shrub species. It may have been a variant of that particular tree species, for example. It's not uncommon for a tree species to also have a large shrub variant, for example. I agree with you that if a tree is indicated on a landscape plan, it ought to have been installed. Happy to do that verification after tonight's hearing with the final landscape plan. I just want to note again that I don't recall there being any specific I just want to note again that I don't recall there being any specific discussion of trees as part of this project. As there often are for other projects where there's heritage tree removal, for example, that's being compensated or other key elements of a project that need to be screened by a tree, for example. I'm not aware that any of those circumstances are applicable to this project.
Okay, well, I'd appreciate if there could be some follow-up. And then I also have one more question for confirmation. Will we be seeing another annual review next year?
Yes, the Commission will have at least one more annual review to consider next year.
Okay, thank you.
Not seeing other hands. I guess I would share my perspective at this point. I actually live right on top of there, but I have occasion to drive past the 7-Eleven and frequent it and frequent other businesses in the area. I'm generally of the view that I agree with staff's assessment that the operation of the business is in substantial conformance with the use permit. I recognize that there were some issues around condition of approval 16 that have been addressed at this point. I'd be inclined to to make a motion for approval, you know, pending any additional comment that folks might have. Commissioner Berman.
Looking for a recommendation from staff or council. How could we incorporate the, the confirmation of the landscaping plan into our, our motion?
I would suggest adding it as a element to the motion, modifying the suggested motion in the agenda packet and direct staff to verify the indicated planting at the front planter area to the right of the main entrance. I think that would be sufficient, in my opinion, but perhaps Ms. Sharma has additional thoughts.
I agree with Deputy Director Murdoch's comments.
I guess if I was going to make a motion, you know, one of the thoughts I have is that, you know, it's coming back in a year anyway. It just strikes me that just go ahead and adopt a clean motion. I mean, there's no indication one way or the other that there's been a failure to comply with the landscaping plan necessarily. It's worth probably inquiring into, but it's certainly something that we could take up next year and could certainly be corrected in the interim if in fact it is an issue. So that the next time we see it, we'll have confirmation that in fact the, the landscape plan has either been confirmed or frankly corrected. Just as a direction to staff as opposed to a part of the motion.
This is Commissioner Berman. I, I see a compromise potentially because I, I have concerns with just punting and, and relying on next year's annual review because I, I lightly recall that we kind of punted on the last review, knowing that there were some issues, but we're going to see it again in a year. I'd hate to continuously punt and not actually have issues or the public's concerns addressed. So I don't know if a compromise would be that we add a condition that just gets added to the annual review that any issues with the landscaping to the point where the landscaping is not significantly resembling what was approved in, with the original approvals of this project, that they have to be addressed. I don't know if there's anything we can do with the condition that gives us an answer before the next annual review, but I'd like to make it a little more tangible.
Well, that wouldn't be my motion, but you're, I'd welcome you to make a motion.
If you give me a minute, I'll pull up the, the motion. If it pleases the Chair, I'll make a motion.
Please.
I move to adopt the attached resolution to find the annual review is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Find that the operation of a 7-Eleven convenience store at 700 Piki Boulevard, assessor parcel number 009-540-030 is substantially in conformance with use permit UP-41-15 and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference with the addition of a condition for the next annual review that confirms the landscaping is planted and maintained in conformance with the originally approved plans.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. So we've got Commissioner Berman's motion, which we've all heard. Is there a second to that motion? Commissioner Ferguson?
I will second Commissioner Berman's motion.
Thank you. So we've got Commissioner Berman's motion and a second by Commissioner Ferguson. Can we get a roll call though, please? Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Liel?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
That motion passes unanimously. Thank you. So the next new public hearing that we have this evening is file number 2018, 2000, I'm sorry, 021, annual review of use permit UP 10618, excuse me, authorizing outdoor seating at the Taco Bell Cantina Restaurant located at 5200 Coast Highway. The recommended SEQA action is exempt pursuant to SEQA Guideline Section 15378. And staff's recommendation with respect to action is that we adopt the attached resolution, including the board of the packet for the Commission. Go ahead and ask for staff report, please.
Good evening, Honorable Commissioners. This is Ranu Agarwal again. The project pertains to the annual review of use permit UP 10618, authorizing outdoor seating at the Taco Bell Cantina Restaurant located adjacent to Pacifica State Beach. Just as a little background, the Planning Commission adopted Resolution Number 2018-004, approving the subject use permit for the operation of outdoor seating with alcohol sales at this restaurant on October 1st, 2018. Condition of approval number 19 of the use permit required two consecutive annual reviews. This annual review is the first to be conducted pursuant to that condition to provide the Planning Commission, the ability to modify the conditions of approval and to evaluate whether ongoing operation of the site is in accordance with the use permit. These requirements are set forth in the conditions of approval in Exhibit A to the Planning Commission Resolution Number 2018004 and incorporated in the agenda packet on pages 131 to 133. Staff had conducted a site visit on October 3rd, 2020 to the subject location to examine compliance with the outdoor seating operations conditions of approval. As discussed in the report, the operator of the restaurant has achieved compliance, substantial compliance with the required conditions of approval following the inspection by city staff. At the time of the inspection and as part of the annual review process, conditions of approval number 10, 12 and 13 were made compliant. As part of the annual review process and after the site visit, these conditions speak to the installation and maintenance of a plexiglass barrier on a gate which is leading to the beach from the outdoor seating. The proper maintenance and operation of this gate which should be alarmed and, and the signage advising patrons not to take alcoholic beverages beyond a certain point. Provisions which are contained in these conditions are necessary so that the operation of the outdoor seating area does not adversely affect public health, safety and welfare. But more generally, the assessment by the police chief and code enforcement officer support the findings that the site has been operated in a manner that does not burden the police department with calls for service and it has also not constituted a public nuisance. Therefore, in staff's opinion, while the operations were made compliant with the three conditions, number 10, 12 and 13, only after inspection by city staff, generally the subject operation has not been detrimental to the health, safety and welfare of persons residing, working in the neighborhood or general welfare of the city. Accordingly, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt the resolution incorporated on pages 120 to 121 of the agenda packet to find the operation of the outdoor seating at Taco Bell Cantina substantially compliant with the use permit UP 10618. Thank you. I'm available for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Agarwal. Let's see if we have any questions from the Commission as a, as a starting proposition. Commissioner Ferguson, I see your hand up.
Apologies for having to put it down from.
Okay, that was left over. Okay, Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. I think for some reason, I might actually have been watching that meeting. I don't know if there was a a Canada's use permit that night or something that had my interest, but what I don't recall is why the, the plexiglass barrier above the alarmed gate. What, what's the function of that? I see that the signs are on it. Is, is there more of a function than that, on that gate?
At the time the use permit was approved, the Planning Commission's concern was whether somebody from the outside can open the door by just putting the, their hand over the gate. So that's why there was this condition to install the barrier above so that, you know, nobody can reach over and open the gate.
Got it. And it says there was a non-conforming barrier there upon the site inspection? What, what was there rather than the plexiglass when y'all initially checked in on it?
The barrier was plexiglass, but the condition asked for a plexiglass barrier which was at, at, you know, which extended to six feet above the surface of the deck. And at some point, maybe because of erosion, I don't know, but the installation was changed somewhere between the time that final inspection was done for the use permit and the site inspection for the annual review. So the barrier was not reaching the height of six feet from the deck.
Okay. And I noticed in the staff report, it, it seems to indicate that you told them that you were coming for the inspection. I was wondering if that's typical procedure or are you required to tell them you're coming?
I am not, I don't think I'm required to tell them that I'm coming, but I did want to have somebody from the facility on the site in case I had any questions of them.
That makes sense to me. It raised a concern whether or not if it's a good idea to give them that opportunity to clean things up before you arrive, if that's not normally the way it, it looks. Although I was there today and it did look quite clean. But I understand that you would want to speak with somebody if there was an issue. So thank you. Those are my questions.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. I'm not seeing any further hands at this point. I'll go ahead and see if I, I'm assuming we'll kind of deal with this sort of the same way we dealt with the prior review and we'll see if there's any public comment. And then after that, if the applicant wants to respond to any, I'm sorry, the business owner happens to be president and wants to respond, then we'll, we'll make that opportunity available. Mr. Murdoch, are there any speakers to this item? I see one hand raised. Betty Duran. Thank you. Ms. Duran, please go ahead.
That hand up was left over from before. I had an additional comment. I have none on this project.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Murdoch, we'll wait a couple more seconds, see if there's anybody else. And Ms. Agarwal, I'm not familiar with the operator that you've engaged with on this item. Do you happen to know if they're present at tonight's meeting?
They said they would be, but I'm not seeing their, him here.
All right, there's one hand raised. James Amon?
Yeah, that's him.
Mr. Amon, please go ahead if you, if you care to comment.
No, thank you. I'm just here to answer any questions that you have of us or Taco Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Amon. We'll go ahead then and close out the public comment portion of this item and bring the matter back to the Commission for consideration. Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. I have two questions. One, I forgot to ask on the last round, but Captain Glasgow, were there any calls for service that you're aware of related to alcohol?
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, no, no issues at the Taco Bell. Again, the police department did not see any quality of life issues or unreasonable draw on law enforcement services or resources. And to follow up, no alcohol violations were noted.
Thank you very much. And my other question is for Chair Niblin, if you'll indulge me. So it, it looks as though you voted against the project at the time and again, it was a while ago, so I don't quite recall. Why, why at the time did you decide to vote against it, if I may ask?
Yeah, at the time, I don't think I was generally opposed to the, to the overall notion of, I think it had to do with perhaps hours of operation, if, if my memory serves, hours of service of, of alcohol. I think I may have had some concerns that weren't shared by other members of the, of the Commission at that time.
Deliberation, you'll let us know if those concerns maintain. Thank you.
Well, I don't see any other comments at this point. I'm wondering if anybody's inclined to, to make a motion. Commissioner Liel.
I'll make a motion, move to adopt the attached resolution to find the annual review and modification of a condition of approval are exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act. Find that the operation of outdoor seating at Taco Bell Cantina at 5200 Coast Highway is substantially in accord with use permit UP 106-18 and incorporate all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Leo. So we have Commissioner Leo's motion. Is there a second to Commissioner, Commissioner Leo's motion? Commissioner Berman?
Second.
Great. So Commissioner Leo has moved and Commissioner Berman has seconded the motions. Can we get a roll call though, please? Commissioner Berman?
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson?
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin?
Yes.
Commissioner Liel?
Yes.
Commissioner Niblin?
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll go ahead then and move on to the third of the new public hearings, sort of the fourth substantive item on our agenda. And this is the file number 2020002, Site Development PSD 84820, Use Permit UP 12220, Parking Exception PE 1920, Variance PV 52920, Intuitive Subdivision Map SUB 24620, filed by Brian Hu to construct a three-story mixed-use building with 1,324 square feet of commercial space located on the ground floor in five residential condominium units located on the second and third floors of the proposed building on a 9,574 square foot undeveloped lot at 340 Waterford Street. The recommended SEQA action is a Class III categorical exemption pursuant to Section 5, 15303 of the SEQA Guidelines. And the recommended action of staff is that we approve this project as conditioned. Go ahead and ask for a staff report, please.
I was just wondering if everyone can see the slides and then I can start the presentation.
I can see it. I think that, I'm guessing if I can see it, probably most folks can, so.
Okay, so this project is a mixed-use development on 340 Waterford Street. The, the project site is a 9,574 square foot undeveloped lot bounded on three sides by roads and a car wash on one side. Waterford Street abuts the project site to the east, Highway 1 on ramp to the west and Monry Road to the south. The Pacifica Car Wash is located adjacent to the site to the north. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly single-family, multifamily. The surrounding neighborhood is predominantly single-family, multifamily residential. These developments are across Waterford Street to the east and playing fields of the Ocean Shore School across Monry Road to the south. The project, the project involves the construction of a three-story mixed-use building with 1,324 square foot commercial space located on the ground floor, down floor and five market rate condominium units located on the second floor and third floor of the building. The project would include 4,709 square foot of usable open space, which will be provided in common and private outdoor spaces and landscaping, and will also include 1,396 square foot of second floor courtyard. Car parking for the project is in an aggregate garage, which will contain a total of 15 parking spaces, six of which would be surface parking and nine would be provided in a parking stacker. The garage itself would be accessed via two-way driveway from Waterford Street. That would be the only vehicular entry to the development. The stacker would be a two-level semi-automated parking system, which is kind of like shown in the picture here, that would enable every user independent access to their vehicles at grade by a lifting and sliding of the parking platforms. The stackers would be operated by a smartphone app or a key fob. Maintenance of the stackers would be the responsibility of the homeowners association and specified in the covenants, conditions, and restrictions for the development. Additionally, the project would also contain services such as trash area on the first law. The permits that are required for this development is a site development permit, use permit, parking exception, variance, and tentative subdivision map for the reasons that you see on this slide below each of the permit category. As far as the project is concerned, the planning commission must make several findings in order to approve the required permits. The staff's analysis pertaining to the findings for these permits are discussed in detail on pages 141 to 161 of the agenda packet. Of note, the project proposes uses that are consistent with the mixed-use designation of the site in the general plan. The project site is also located in the East H-Mark Pacific Manor neighborhood and is consistent with the general plan narrative for this area, which ambitions it shifting into a well-designed, high-density residential development to better support the neighborhood character. The site is in C1 Neighborhood Commercial Zoning District and conforms to the C1 zoning standards, which as shown in table in the zoning confirming table on page 135 of the agenda packet, subject to a variance for the site setbacks and a parking section for dimensional requirements of the parking in the stackers. A variance is required for reduced site setbacks because per code, the clustered housing development, which is in the form of a condominium project above the commercial use, requires a setback of 15 foot along Waterford Street and 10 feet along Highway 1 on Ram. In staff's opinion, this variance is justified in, in that the grant of the variance under the circumstances of this case by way of site location and surroundings would not be a grant of a special privilege, which is not available to properties in the vicinity and under identical zoning classification, which is the property to the north. And it would also not be materially adversely, adversely affect the public health, welfare, and safety. It would also be consist, the project would be consistent with the city guidelines as well, which I will speak to shortly, but that is one of the findings for the variance that staff needs to make per the code. As far as the parking exception is concerned, that is for the parking stackers to deviate from the dimensional requirements for nine spaces. Per code, the proposed project must provide parking spaces, which are a minimum of 171 square foot in area, minimum width of nine feet, minimum length of 19 feet, and a minimum vertical clearance of seven feet. The stacker model that is being used will allow for a clear headroom of six foot eight inches for walking on the lower level and 12 foot eight inches for a pedestal when lowered. And the horizontal dimensions of the stall would be seven foot 10 inches in width and seven foot one inch in length. So based on these dimensions and research done by staff in the type of cars, which are typically used in the United States, these dimensions would accommodate most cars based on the dimensions of sport utility vehicles, which are commonly driven in the country. So in staff's assessment, it is a reasonable option to develop and improve this irregularly shaped lot, which is less than 10,000 square foot in size, because the stacker would allow for a smaller footprint than the typical parking, typical then parking in according to the typical parking standards. The parking exception in staff's opinion is justified because of the hardship identified in the shape and the size of the lot and because the provision of the stack parking would result in required number of parking spaces being provided and dimensional characteristics of the parking spaces, which are as fully in compliance with the requirements as is reasonably possible. In staff's assessment, the proposed development is also consistent with the city's design guidelines. The proposed building is sufficiently distant from the nearest building so as not to unreasonably cut out light and air. So this is a design guideline particular to site planning that staff explored. The nearest building to the site is 65 feet away from the property or from the, from the subject property, and the building itself is about 35 feet height, which is the building that is proposed. The project screens all storage, service, paving, and parking areas on the interior of the site, so it minimizes impact on the streetscape. Architecturally, the building design maintains the cohesive style and incorporates materials, colors, and details that lend variety to the design. It includes details such as softets, sunscreens, trellises, wall and sets, and balconies to scale down the mass of the three-story building, and it also incorporates landscaping and pedestrian improvement and amenities. So in staff, staff's assessment, there is substantial evidence to support planning commission's approval of this project. Staff received one public comment after the publication of the agenda, which was forwarded. We are emailed to the commissioners and it was also posted on the planning commissioner commission's website. As per staff's recommendation, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt the resolution incorporated in the agenda packet pages 61 to 65, finding the project exempt from SEQA and approving it as conditioned. Thank you. This concludes, this concludes the staff report.
Thank you, Ms. Agarwal. Go ahead then, and at this juncture, ask if any commissioners have clarifying questions of Ms. Agarwal or other members of staff related to the project. Commissioner Bigstick.
Thank you, Chair. I have, I have a good handful of questions. Well, I was looking at the, so let's start with the parking stacker, because I'm intrigued by the idea. I think it's, it's interesting to incorporate this technology, which is not currently in Pacifica. And immediately, I was wondering, not necessarily immediately, because we actually looked at this more or less about a year ago, and my, my questions kind of lingered, but I was wondering about power outages and other mechanical failures and, and I, it's kind of addressed in the staff report, but I, I think my greater question was how often on average do malfunctions occur? That's my first question, and I was curious how loud the apparatus actually is. And will it be heard through the walls of the building itself into the residences? Could it be heard across the street, that kind of thing?
The attachment in, in the, along with the staff report lays out the sound ratings that is for different types of sound levels. And this project, this stacker, according to that attachment, is not going to be heard outside beyond the sound level of a person speaking.
Thank you very much. And as to how frequently the apparatus is known to fail, do you know on average how often malfunctions might occur with this machine?
Malfunctions with the machine or the power going out?
Well, with the power going out, I think my, that's more of a, I think I was more worried about PG&E calling a power shut off due to a seasonal fire danger, and that, that triggered that concern, but I, we don't have a way of knowing that right now. I am wondering on average, how often it just physically malfunctions, because that might be something we can base something on.
The staff did some research on the company that is, that is responsible for making these, that makes these parking systems. And based on the data, it seems that it is reliable in its operation, but that is a question that I would want to defer to the applicant to answer in greater detail.
Thank you for that. When looking at the dimensions of the, the actual spaces, I, I was curious what kind of vehicles it, it might not allow. So I figured trucks might be what might not fit in these spaces.
That's correct.
Okay. I didn't see a list of vehicles that might be also on the popular side that might be disallowed by this setup, but it, it might be helpful if I had a clearer understanding of how many different truck types themselves, which there are a number of folks driving around in trucks in our community, and I was curious if that factors into the equation.
Staff research to the trucks, dimensions as well, and some of the bigger trucks are not going to be able to use these parking spaces, but the attachment with the staff report, which is attachment I, gives you a fair idea of the SUVs, which are on the larger side, that would be able to fit in these spaces.
But some of the flatbed trucks were more of a concern to me, knowing that there are a number of people who drive them on the one hand, and on the other hand, sometimes they're the less expensive method for getting around when someone's buying a truck. So I just wanted to put that into it. Another question about sidewalks, does the sidewalk, I would imagine it goes up to about where the fence currently is on the property, is that where the sidewalk would end, or would it jut out from where the fence is currently?
I'm just looking at the plans. The sidewalk is proposed, give me a minute here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Bigstick, while Ms. Agarwal's researching that information, can you clarify what you mean by jutting out?
Sure. So you know how there's a fence right now on the property? So my question is if the sidewalk falls up to where the fence is, or if it goes past where the fence is? My concern being that it seemed like a fairly narrow street with cars parked on the other side. And I also appreciate that there might be some red zoning that isn't currently there, but I don't know if it's going to substantially shorten the street as it is or, or not.
The site, the sidewalk doesn't extend in the right of way. So it is, it does extend beyond the fence of the property onto the Monry side.
On the race side, but not the Waterford side? To get more specific, I was more concerned with the Waterford side.
So Commissioner Stick, I'm not sure that, I'm not sure if I can tell you exactly where that fence is installed currently, but what I read on sheet A 0.2 on packet page 199, it appears to me that the sidewalk is proposed to align consistently with where the sidewalk is now on the adjacent property at the Pacifica Car Wash. And it would look that the sidewalk is proposed within the public right of way.
Okay, perfect.
So it does, it does not appear that the sidewalk installation for this project would have the effect of narrowing the, the driving lanes on the street, if that's the concern.
That was the concern, thank you. Was there any sound analysis done for Highway, Highway 1? What, what the occupants of the residences might experience? Like, I didn't see any analysis of windows or sound related to Highway 1 on the effect of the residents themselves. Was any of that analysis conducted?
Not specific to this project, Commissioner Bigstick. It's my understanding that the building code, which would be applicable to construction of this project, does have interior sound dampening requirements, and that as part of the building permit process, the project architect or other technical professional would need to demonstrate the building materials are adequate to reduce the sound levels in situations like this, where a project's adjacent to a highway or other significant noise generator.
That was definitely the biggest concern of mine for the residents, as I was looking at this project, was the sound off Highway 1. And then my last question for the moment will be the blue stucco, I believe on the north side wall. It, it struck me as being kind of out of character with the rest of the development. Is there a particular reason why suddenly there's just this one wall of blue going on, or?
Yeah, I think I'm just asking the project architect for design reasoning, is I interpret the plans and the surrounding area, my sense is it was a nod to the, sort of the prominence of that color northward on Waterford Street. There's several buildings in that area that have that color. And I think if you look back at this project site from that area, it does have the effect of feeling consistent with the broader area, even though it is a, it is a different color scheme and material scheme than the other sides of this building.
Oh, I did have one more question. There's some reference as to if the property where the car wash currently is were to be developed. So I just wanted to clarify, are there any plans right now in the mix to develop that property?
On, not that staff is aware of, I, we haven't received any application on that project, on that site.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Bigstick. Commissioner Berman.
Yes, thank you. I have quite a few questions, but I'll, I'll start with some of my car stacker questions, because Commissioner Bigstick kind of led the way. For the record, I think I understand this correctly, but so the residential units require 10 parking spaces. The car stackers provide nine with an extra 10th space that allows it to kind of Rubik's Cube around, correct?
There is, the stacker would have nine spaces and one space would be always empty so that the stackers can move for the stacker on the top, upper level to come down when, you know, somebody needs to take their car out. So the total number of parking spaces in the stacker is nine, even though there are 10 stalls. And one would always be empty.
Right, okay. And then there's a 10th stall provided in the plan, that's a surface level stall, correct?
Correct.
Okay, for the residential units. So then, what is preventing someone from just parking in that empty 10th space of the stacker? Is it the sliding gate?
The lower level stacker stalls do have gates, and then this would be operated by a key fob or smartphone app. So the people who have parking spots in that area would be the ones to be able to use it.
So basically, if, if all nine stalls are full, then the gates would not open, correct?
I would defer that question to the applicant, but my understanding. Uh, I would defer that question to the applicant, but my understanding is that, that, that is correct.
Okay, cause I, I would just be concerned that someone might park in that vacant spot and then jam up the entire system. With that, I had a question about the sliding gate. Just looking at the, the plan view of the ground floor, where does that gate slide into? It's, is it like a pocket door type thing where it slides? I can't tell where the gate slides open and closed, or does it stack on top of itself?
That mechanism is more clear in the cross section. Are you, you talking about the parking stacker gate, right?
Yes, the parking stacker gate. I was trying to wrap my head around how this operates. I'm, I'm a little familiar with car stackers, but not quite as familiar with the gates that go in front of them. And I, I guess I was confused because I don't see where the gate would open into because there's a I think there's like a storage room on one side and then there's the exterior wall on the other. I could ask the applicant.
They should be able to provide more detail on that.
Sure. Okay, I'll save that for the applicant. The, so Commissioner Big Stick mentioned a question that I already had. So with power outages, I understand from the staff report that the homeowners association would use a backup generator. What wasn't clear to me was it, it sounded like the generator would not always be on site. Is that true?
That's correct.
So then in the state of an emergency that's not expected, because, because I understand, you know, during fire season, we'll have expected, expected power outages where the maintenance team can prepare for the generator beyond, to be on site, but what if there is an earthquake or in an unexpected wildfire where power goes out unexpectedly? And actually that kind of happens occasionally during the winter when we have tough storms. What happens then?
In that scenario, the HOA is responsible actually for bringing the generator on site, which would be then installed inside the garage to operate the system. But if it is a calamity like an earthquake, that is that is a calamity that would affect a lot of different things and staff is not aware of of that calamity not affecting other buildings in the area or the project itself.
Um, okay, Commissioner Berman, I think also to your point, you know, if it, if this hearing proceeds to the appropriate time, I think it's perfectly reasonable for the commission to be more prescriptive with respect to the generator. Such that, you know, provided building and fire code requirements can be met, that the generator be stored on site for ready, you know, deployment when needed. But to Ms. Agarwal's point, I don't think we can prevent against a hundred percent scenario where, you know, there's a ma- major calamity. What we can, I think, do is take reasonable steps if the commission approves the project to ensure that the most common types of power outages hopefully have a reasonable process to get the, the stacker back in operation.
Yeah, and, and that's what I was kind of getting at. And we could deliberate more on that. I'll note to remember to talk about it, but I'd be in favor of if it's in our purview to require that the applicant has a generator on site at all times, ready to use in the case of an emergency. One more question about the car stackers. Will there be a specific section in the CCNRs for the, the car stackers and regular maintenance? Whether it's monthly or, or bimonthly?
The CCNRs currently include a provision for a declaration that they would be responsible for the maintenance and for and including the specifics of the generator parameters. I'm just trying to find that in the conditions.
So there's a packet page one eighty nine, it's paragraph C, it's a general statement about property maintenance, a variety of features, including parking within the common areas and it burdens the HOA with the maintenance responsibility for those facility.
Is it in our purview to prescribe something a little more specific there? Like, for example, monthly maintenance?
Well, I think it would be reasonable if the commission had a basis to believe that the stacker could break down without monthly maintenance. I don't know that we have that information currently. I understand from the applicant that a representative of the parking stacking, parking stacker company may be available to answer questions in the hearing and perhaps the commission can flesh that out further with respect to typical maintenance requirements and so forth.
Yeah, okay. And I'll cer- I certainly have more questions, like for example, what if there's trash left there and something can't move? But those for the applicant, I just kind of wanted to know what our constraints are to stay within the purview of the commission. I do have other questions. I'm going to let other commissioners speak if they have questions.
Commissioner Berman, why don't you, why don't you go ahead? I don't see other hands right now, so please, please proceed.
Thank you. Um, I know I've mentioned this before and I believe Commissioner Hauser has mentioned it on a couple of projects as well. I, I know there's overhead lines in this location. I'm wondering if there's an opportunity for the applicant to underground the overhead lines that directly touch the property or the property frontage.
Well, Vice Chair Berman, as I've explained in prior hearings, the city, to my knowledge, does not have any general policy or ordinance requirement for applicants to underground existing utilities in the vicinity of the project site. There are underground utility district provisions that the city can implement, but this is not an area to my knowledge where that underground utility district has been designated. With respect to the new utilities being installed, the city does have a policy and a standard condition of approval to require new utility lines and connections to be installed underground from the point of connection into the project site. In order to require this undergrounding for this project, I think the commission would need to find some nexus between the project and the fact that the utilities are above ground and how it relates to impacts from the project. Staff did not identify any such impacts, but we'd be happy to hear the commission's discussion in that regard.
Is it, is there any? I know we're working on the general plan and local coastal land use plan and shark parts specific plan. Is there any anticipation that will, the city will eventually have some requirement to some extent to underground existing electrical? Because kind of what it looks like is new projects come in and everyone avoids undergrounding the electrical facilities. And then they just end up falling during the winter. And I know it's a maintenance item that likely PG&E needs to address, but I'm wondering if there's any future plan to incorporate that.
I'm not aware that that's been a subject of discussion in any of those planning processes that you've mentioned. Certainly there are methods that a city can undertake to require undergrounding of utility lines as part of a broader public process. But again, to require an individual applicant to do it, it's an impact you'd have to identify specific to this project. And keeping in mind, you know, the entire community benefits from these utility poles. And so, you know, to require an individual applicant to underground it would be a very fact specific inquiry in this case.
Okay, thank you. This is an easy one. I noticed in condition number twenty seven, there's a typo. It says maybe one word when I believe it's supposed to be may be. I just mentioned it because I think it changes the, the meaning of the sentence.
Thank you.
The storage units that are required for each residential unit, I only saw two. I saw one on the ground floor and then one on the second floor. Can staff maybe direct me to where the remaining three are? Ms. Agarwal, I believe you're on mute. I don't know if you're speaking.
So the storage units which are supposed to be provided with each unit are on the floor plans. And I'm just going to give you the sheet number in a second.
Yeah, I see them on sheet A zero point one on packet page one ninety eight. You can see on the second floor plan, there are storage units indicated in unit one, two, three and four, and then I believe it's on the third floor plan, you'll see the storage unit for unit number five.
Okay. Okay, I'll take a closer look at that. Then my last couple of questions regarding the Caltrans right of way. Does the applicant have to apply for a Caltrans encroachment permit?
But the project is not in the Eastman, I don't think.
For the landscaping?
They would have to imply, apply for an encroachment permit from the engineering department and the conditions for the encroachment permit would be addressed in the conditions of approval that are pretty, that are the engineering conditions of approval.
And Vice Chair Berman, just to, to clarify for the commission, this project has been processed under two different planners. There was a different planner that was processing the project at the time when we were addressing the Caltrans right of way issue. I don't recall what the outcome of that discussion was, but perhaps the applicant can shed some light on that particular issue. I believe a satisfactory resolution was reached, but I cannot offer the specifics at this time.
Okay, thank you. I mainly asked because I'm wondering what the flexibility of planting along that kind of bare sloped area on Monterey. I think that's a good opportunity to provide some nice planting as opposed to just hydro seeding and perennials. And then lastly, also involving the Caltrans right of way minorly. I know one of the conditions is to slurry at least half of Monterey. And with that, the pavement marking will be replaced, but I'm wondering if there's an opportunity because the pavement marking is pretty worn out there and it's actually kind of confusing for someone that's not used to driving in the area, especially on Monterey. When you're trying to merge on to, you know, near highway one, I'm wondering if there's an opportunity to restripe that area. Both, so both Monterey along the property frontage of Monterey and then also the entirety of of Waterford.
Yeah, please allow us a minute to review the condition from the public works department with respect to the slurry seal requirement. If it does involve that area, I would suspect as a practical matter, the pavement markings would be replaced if they were affected by the slurry seal. Perhaps you're understanding the condition to not involve the slurry seal of the area in question?
It seemed like, like, and maybe I'm interpreting it wrong, but it seemed like the condition only included Waterford. It did not include Monterey. And I'm wondering if we can add Monterey to that because the the pavement marking, like the lane delineation where there's a fork, it's just not there at all.
Yeah, I think, you know, certainly the commission could inquire with the applicant if they were willing to undertake that improvement as part of the project. I think additionally, the commission might explore whether for safe operation of this project because this project will be contributing traffic and trips to this area if ensuring that those are highly visible might be appropriate as well.
Thank you. That's all my questions for staff.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. I just had a really quick question for staff and it really pertained to the, kind of the commercial component of the project and wanted to get a sense of and I know it's in the staff report, I guess it's wanted to reiterate it or, or clarified the sorts of businesses that would be authorized to operate in the commercial space that's that's proposed for the project.
It could be office spaces, could be retail stores and personal services. So there are two spaces there and retail, personal services, type users and offices would be what could operate there.
Anything that was like kind of food serving or, or would that be the kind of thing, I don't know, like a cafe or, or purveyors of that sort of stuff?
The restaurants were not included as part of consideration for these spaces.
Okay. And Chair Nebelin, there's a range of permitted and conditional uses within the C one zoning district. Retail uses, including retail restaurants, which is a particular type of food use, would be a permitted use in this zoning district. But other more intensive uses like restaurants, which include full service restaurants and fast food restaurants would not be permitted uses. Those are conditional uses that would require approval of the use permit. But the retail restaurant is a primarily takeaway type of food use and that would be a permitted use in this zoning district. Okay, thank you. Appreciate it. Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, it looks like the guys have covered almost all, all the possibilities. The only thing I didn't hear brought up was there's a lot of use now of lithium ion batteries as a standby power source as opposed to generators. Was there? I'd be interested if that was looked into or whether the applicant could comment on whether that might be a cheaper more effective solution to keep the parking stacker working.
Uh, the applicant has provided us information about the ability to bring the generator on site. They were going to evaluate the possibility of a battery powered apparatus, but I defer that question to the applicant to give more details on.
Thank you, Ms. Agarwal. Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Chair, if I may, just to circle back to Vice Chair Berman's question about paving and pavement markings. I see condition of approval thirty six on packet page one ninety two. I read that to indicate the overlay over Waterford Street and Monterey Road and there's a, an explicit requirement that all pavement markings and markers shall be replaced in kind. I would suspect the applicant would not replace them in a degraded condition in kind. And so again, I think the practical effect would be that they would be replaced and to clearly delineate the features that you were indicating.
What packet page was that again?
One ninety two.
Ninety two, okay, thank you.
Commissioner Godwin, to your question about battery backup, certainly the applicant should be able to elaborate on that. We would probably want to also inquire as to the amount of power usage and whether that would be an appropriate backup solution, given that the battery itself could be drained and then leave the operation again without a functioning parking stacker.
Sure, but you know, places like South Australia store hundreds of vamp hours of power for hundreds of thousands of people. Sure, but you know, places like South Australia store hundreds of amp hours of power for hundreds of thousands of people. So I'm sure a big enough one could. I don't know whether it's cost effective.
Understood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Bigstick, looks like you have a follow up.
I do, because that just sparked in my mind the idea of if residents there rather than large trucks have electrically powered vehicles and their parking spot is in the stacker. What, how would they connect to electricity to charge their car batteries within the context of the stacker?
Well, there are two locations for chargers within the surface parking area and that are required by code. So the applicant has provided the charging stations that we can require. And anybody who would want to probably charge the vehicle would would hook it up to the charger which are in the surface parking area.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Bigstick. Commissioner Godwin, is your, do you have something I knew or is that a leftover hand?
It's a leftover.
Thank you. I think then we've, we'll go ahead then and move to the hearing from the applicant. We afford the applicant 10 minutes to excuse me, present on the project and also to reserve any portion of that 10 minutes that the applicant chooses to to address any issues that may come up in the context of public comments. So with that said, we'll go ahead then and hear from the applicant.
Mr. O'Jannon, you're on mute.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, please go ahead.
Okay, thank you, commissioners and Ron New and Christian for all your hard work on this project. It's a small project, but obviously with a lot of complexity. I'm the architect and the representative for the project applicant, Brian Hu. We've been working on this project for about two years, trying to find a good feasible solution for this project, which is a prime infill development opportunity that can go a long way toward addressing some of the housing shortage issues that we're facing in the Bay Area. It's a problematic site that has a lot of complexity just because of the geometry of the site and its location along the Caltrans right of way on a corner lot with a hot configuration. I would like to share my screen if that's possible.
It should be. Are you not seeing the option?
Let's see. I don't see that in the dropdown. Oh, here we go. So I'm going to jump to the exhibit of the plans. And I'll just talk briefly about the situation along the Caltrans on ramp right of way. Basically, we have three. Can you see my screen? Okay. Everyone, okay. So we have three sides of frontage. However, we only have one side that allows access from Waterford due to the access restrictions from the Caltrans right of way and also the development limitations on along the on ramp. We're really limited to the sidewalk and the corner. Going to take us to overhead view of the site. So the strategy was in citing the building was really to pull it back from the corner, preserve the corner as much as possible to create a public, kind of like a most like a pocket park that could act as a visual extension to the open field across from the site and give create like a public, public anatomy, I'm sorry, a public amenity by creating this pocket park and then extending the landscaping along the sidewalk in the front of the building, which you can see better in this view. This is the Caltrans on ramp buffer zone and we were limited in our plantings to you know, very kind of low, low profile mix of plants that will not block any visual access on the on ramp and that's does allow it through Caltrans through a maintenance agreement that's going to have to be between the city and the state and Caltrans is also allowing an improvement here at the crosswalk across Waterford. So the building arrangement is basically creating a podium that will house the commercial functions and the garage entrance at the furthest point from the corner. Above, we have a bar building facing the highway to prevent noise and wind from the west and create a sheltered courtyard for the residents. Facing the neighborhood, we're creating a series of town, town home like units with the voids between them to allow a more porous street edge along that side. This is an answer to the question about the, the color of the stucco. So it is a reference to some of the other homes in the neighborhood that have this color and trying to tie in the more town, townhouse like units to the neighborhood context and creating a a scale of pedestrian experience that, that would create a safe and pedestrian experience along the edge and also a buffer to the mass of the building, trying to break that down as much as possible. We continue that language as we wrap around to the north property line. Again, trying to break up the massing with these voids carved out for balconies for that side of the project that is facing the neighboring building. I think you can see see the configuration a little bit better in this view here. So we have the, the bar building and these are two stacked units. And then we have the, the townhouse units that are facing toward the toward the neighborhood. I'm going to go right to the ground floor plan. Just to I think this is important to show how the parking works. We have the commercial spaces that are facing the sidewalk in the zone is the landscape area. We we're creating a small public plaza. All of the building services, storage and utilities are located within the garage. The, the stacker unit is located against the rear of the, the parking area. There is a, I know there's a concern about the noise of the unit. There's about 70 feet from the unit to the garage entrance and another 60 feet to the nearest neighbor. The unit is, or the entire ground floor is constructed of concrete and there's a concrete floor level above and with sound isolators. This will be a very quiet unit around 30 decibels, which is the normal level of speech. So sound should be not, not be an issue either transmission into the units above or to the neighbors across the street.
Mr. You have about two minutes left.
Sure. The office spaces are large enough to have a viable office function within them and we try to keep that low intensity to avoid too much traffic or commercial activity. The next level up, we have the courtyard for the housing units. This is the lower level for the three units facing the neighbors. And then there's a large unit here in a community room. The next level above, we have the upper level of the three units facing the neighbors and the upper flat and a deck that is serving this flat here. And this is all open courtyard below. In the roof, we have zones for photo, required photovoltaic arrays and future expansion arrays. And this is the open courtyard open to the deck. So there is quite a lot of program and we, we did our best to try to use a lot of very variation of materials and textures and, and scales, try to break down the massing of the building and relate to the to the scale of the, the neighborhood and hopefully create a contributing building.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Murdock, I think what we'll do now is turn to a, a public comment on the, on the project and I'll ask if there are any hands raised for public comment.
There are, Chair. I see a hand raised by Julian Park.
Yep, Mr. Park, please proceed.
Good evening, this is Julian. Hope you can hear me. I've got a couple of questions about property. I live on Bancroft Way, which is essentially this building is directly between myself and our ocean view. So this is going to be my view from my front window. Now, the parking, we've already just heard that there's nine units in a stacker plus one additional ground floor parking space. There's a carpool space and two disabled blue packer spaces. And now we're saying that there's also one for electric charging, of course, that would need to rotate with different people. And supposedly there's two spaces that are going to be aside aside for the commercial offices. And in my mind, that doesn't add up to the number of spaces we've actually got. And so my question is if there's commercial offices or retail spaces, I'm assuming the parking for anyone visiting those retail spaces or commercial offices is going to have to be street parking, which we don't have on Waterford or Bancroft Way. If anyone drives down on a regular basis, aside from the last couple of months during COVID, it's generally double parked on both sides. And then the the actual building itself, I'm concerned about how construction is going to happen or where the, the vehicles are going to be parking during the construction period. And perhaps they can negotiate with the car wash to borrow some of that car parking space there to keep their vehicles clear of the street. And I think finally, I do actually admire the building and the design looks wonderful. I just wish it wasn't a 40 foot building in front of my house. With that, I'll relinquish my time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Park. Mr. Murdock, are there other comments?
There are, Chair. We have Craig Blackstone.
Mr. Blackstone, please go ahead.
Thank you. Commissioners, I believe you received the letter that I sent. I was the one who had made public comment. I hope you have all had the opportunity to read it and I will gladly answer any questions you may have based on its content. But to recap, there were particular things I do want to bring to the attention of the commission. And the first is that notwithstanding the proposed findings, this building is really not consistent with the neighborhood. It is totally out of scale to it. There is no other building in our neighborhood at which the building itself comprises over 90% of the plot size. There's nothing topographical that requires that in this particular case. The only reason that a setback variance would be appropriate is if the commission determines it's more important to not comply with standards of setbacks for residential properties because they want to encourage as much overbuilding as is possible. That's the only conclusion that would be drawn if this permit is granted. This is a C1 zoning site, but only a less than 10% of the project is devoted to commercial. So it's really clear that the focus of this development is residential and it should comply with all other residential requirements, which include the setback requirements. Because they want to overbuild the property, they can only do that if the setbacks are variance is granted. As, as Mr. Park noted, there's no way for the parking for the commercial tenants or occupants, patrons to occur unless they park on Waterford itself. There is an error in the analysis by the programmer regarding the width of Waterford. It is only 30 feet wide. If there's parking on both sides of the street, there is no way for two lanes of traffic to go. And that would definitely result and often does result in traffic congestion on Waterford. Additionally, there's an error in the location of the closest building to the proposed project. The analysis of the programmer is that the closest building is 347 Waterford. However, our building at 207 Monterey is directly across the street and more than 30 feet closer than what's in the projections by the planner. As a result, their analysis of the effect of light and shadow is in error. And there was a previous plan to have a, a shorter building on that same site. Story poles were put up with respect to that proposed project. And from inside our house, we could not see the top of the story poles. So that would be a total reduction in light and air coming to our home. If this is, is this is granted, it's our feeling that this site is totally unsuitable for this particular project and I thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Blackstone. Mr. Murdock, next commenter, please.
I see no other hands raised at this time, Chair.
Okay, well, we'll just wait a couple more seconds. Okay. If there are no other commenters, we'll, we'll go ahead then and bring the matter back to the commission. I, Mr. Murdock, I might, by my count, the applicant used all 10 of the applicant's minutes. Is that right?
That is the case, Chair, but I'm not sure that we clearly identified the requirement to reserve time for rebuttal. So maybe.
I think I did, but, but I guess what I'll say is that insofar as the applicant wants to respond to any of the matters raised, I'll go ahead and afford you a minute or two to do. And you certainly don't need to if you don't want.
Oh, sure. Yeah, so we are sympathetic to the concerns, but in, in light of the need for housing, I think that, you know, these, these types of developments are very important to try to offset some of that demand that we're facing and I think we've done a good job of, you know, creating a, a smart development proposal that would be an enhancement to the neighborhood and certainly transform scene of urban blight into something that, that would really add value to the neighborhood.
Thank you. We'll go ahead then and bring the matter back to the commission. I'll ask my colleagues if they have any questions or, or comments or deliberation. Commissioner Ferguson.
Yeah, I guess my comment would be to staff. I am sensitive to Mr. Blackstone's concerns. It appears that he is losing entirely his ocean view and his his sundown part of the day. I also am sensitive to His sundown part of the day. I also am sensitive to. The developers here, especially in light of the RHNA memo we received earlier this week and the coming mandate of infill development. Per Mr. Blackstone's comments, Christian, I'm fairly new to this. So hopefully you can help me out with this. I'm sorry, Mr. Murdoch. Is there a reason that the setback, just because it's zone C one, is being observed as commercial even when it's. It's fairly evident that the development is really a residential development?
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson, for the opportunity to touch on a couple of points that you mentioned. I'll take first the point you made about impacts to adjacent property owners' views. There's no view preservation ordinance in the city of Pacifica and with respect to. Impacts to light and air, the required finding for the project is unreasonably restricting light and air. I think, you know, from what I sensed from the commenter's statements. It seems as though perhaps a building of any size more than a single story might impact. The view that is currently enjoyed, which is understandable as to the impacts, but I don't know that it's unreasonable for a building. With a general plan designation of mixed use and a commercial zoning designation. To be limited necessarily to a single story in this instance. And so I think it's staff's analysis that this project would not unreasonably limit access to light and air. In particular, because of the distance between this project site and the adjacent properties. And the fact that a reasonable amount of development should be allowed on this site. With respect to the setback question, there's really two things going on on this project. There's the commercial component of the site for which the zoning in the C one district does not establish a minimum property line setback. The planning commission can determine what an appropriate setback is through the site development permit review process. And with respect to the second and third story development, we did evaluate it as a residential clustered housing development. Which means a condominium or townhome development. That does have increased setback requirements beyond even those of a regular residential development in a residential zoning district. The the issue here is that our zoning in the Pacifica municipal code does not have. Provisions, in my opinion, that are on point for mixed use development. They have commercial zoning standards and they have residential zoning standards and there's no third category of mixed use zoning. The issue with respect to the setbacks is applicable only in the event that it's a clustered housing development, which again means ownership units. Of condominium or townhome type, in this case condominium ownership units for this project. If this were a rental project, we'd be talking only about the commercial zoning district setbacks, which would mean. No required setback unless imposed by the planning commission. And so I'm not sure that as staff sought to reconcile this discrepancy or at least the omission of on point zoning standards. For mixed use development that we saw in the first instance, a real public policy need to address. This development with increased setbacks at the second story of the type that are required for ownership units. But more importantly, the unique configuration of a lot in staff's assessment anyways justified approval of a variance. Given the constraints that the site faces, it's odd orientation with the front property line to Monterey. And it's rather unusual configuration as compared to other properties in the area. Most notably, the property immediately to the north, which is very wide and would have no ability, no, no difficulty, I should say. With complying with these zoning standards and so happy to answer any follow up questions you might have.
No, actually, my only question was for the zoning. The rest I was just acknowledging concerns. Just to be clear, you are saying that this is a variance to the standards for cluster residential. This development.
That's correct. The setback standards in question for the variance are contained within the residential clustered housing standards. Applicable only to ownership projects involving condominiums or townhomes. These standards are not applicable in this zoning district for rental housing project. And so it's just that issue of ownership that requires or that leads to different standards being applied to the project.
Understood.
Thank you, Commissioner Ferguson. Commissioner Berman.
Thank you. I kind of touched on that point. Um, I know that these are being subdivided airspace for condominiums. But does the applicant intend to sell each unit? Once occupancy is allowed or is there any intent to rent out the units with the lease?
I think that's a question for the applicant. We did not offer offer that question to the applicant. You know, we're evaluating these as condominium units. There are provisions in the municipal code that, in my opinion, would make ongoing rental of such units perhaps undesirable. With respect to city approval of rent increases and so forth. And so it would seem to me to be in the applicant's best interest to sell them at the earliest opportunity, but you may wish to ask that question of the applicant.
Sure.
Mr. John, did you did you want to go ahead and speak to that man?
Yes, that's the current model is to develop them and sell them. Brian Hu. Can, if you can unmute him, he can respond to that more directly.
Good evening, commissioners. I don't necessarily want to sell them. And at first I was thinking of doing a affordable housing for this. Property, but then I got rejected in my first commission meeting. So I just want to. Build something nice for the neighborhood and then I want to keep some of it. Maybe my family would want to live there and definitely not thinking of selling it. In the first tenure.
And Mr. Hu, just clarification. Do you so you intend to be the the property owner and manager and landlord? And then rent out each of the units?
Not necessarily renting it because I own a construction company. I have, I will occupy the commercial space as an office. And also I might want to live there for some some of the unit because I have multiple partners in this. Yeah, it probably going to occupy most of it, maybe one or two. Unit will be rented out.
Okay, so you you intend to rent out at least one unit. Without selling it right off. Okay. Okay, I'm wondering, I guess, so staff, understanding that these might be some rental units. Does that change any of the discussion on setbacks or other items in the staff report?
Not from my perspective. I think, you know, what the subdivider does with these units is up to the subdivider. As I mentioned, let me say first, because the property, the project if approved would be. A clustered housing development with approval of the tentative subdivision map. It would still be subject to the setback requirements that are in question and the variance would need to be approved. For the project to move forward as currently proposed. As I mentioned, there are provisions in the municipal code about ongoing rental of condominiums prior to sale. As I think about it more, though, forgive me, I think those only apply to condominium condominium conversions, not to direct condominium creation. And so please disregard my prior statement about city approval of rent increases.
Okay, does the applicant have any other process that they'll have to go through in order to make these rental units? Or once they're developed, he could do what he pleases with them?
Right, so no additional approval would be required to rent these condominium units. And so there's not an additional process or any city involvement in that, contrary to my prior statement. So again, I retract the comment about city approval of rent increases and other requirements for rented condominiums. Those are not applicable in this case.
Okay, got it. Thank you. So I'll move on to some of my questions for the applicant regarding the car stackers. I was asking staff earlier about how the gate would work. Can you clarify that? I guess I couldn't tell from the plans. Does the gate slide over itself like in layers? Or does it it slide into a pocket?
It slides over itself. It's like a closet door, basically bypass doors.
Is there any, is there ever any time where the vacant spot that's used to slip a car in has to be on either end? Oh, I think you're on mute.
Sorry, there's a, there's always one that is. Going to be vacant, so.
Mark, I'm on, I'm on now if you can hear me.
Oh, um, we have the rep from Harding Steel, who's rep for the product, who can answer that much better than I can right now.
Oh, great.
Yeah, so I did cut out for a second as I was trying to figure out how to unmute myself, but I think I I think I heard the whole question. So the the gates are full, full height as far as they're eight feet high. And horizontal sliding gates that slide back and forth behind each other, just as if you were on a, are like a sliding closet door. So they they slide back and forth behind each other. And they do have integrated sensors in them that. Are pressure sensitive, just just like very, very similar to a shopping center. If you get bumped by that door, they really automatically reverse, things like that. So it's a very nice safe door.
Okay, and then if the if all nine spots are full. Will the gates, will the doors not open?
The only person who can open a door is the person who has a fob or app for that. You can't just like a pedestrian can't sneak in off the street and open the gate. It will only work if you call your space, your space is, this cars are shuffled, it brings your car to the access level. And then the gate in front of your your space open. It would only be your space. You cannot accidentally park in the wrong spot.
Okay, I see. So each person is designated their own space. Therefore, there shouldn't be a concern with someone accidentally blocking that tent space.
Yeah, exactly. That that is virtually impossible. It's designed to prevent that.
Okay, got it. Thank you. And then in regards to maintenance, so. If I mainly thinking if there's garbage, if someone drops something out of their car and things kind of land on the system.
Yeah.
The system jam up or break or or maybe what recommended maintenance? Does there have to be a weekly check that there's no debris?
We we do encourage people to, you know, building maintenance to be proactive and walk through and make sure that there isn't stuff. But normal leaves and things like that won't cause the system to stop. If somebody leaves a piece of luggage in there or something like that, that would be more of an issue, but that's a completely different situation. In general, all of our maintenance, our standard maintenance is quarterly, which is pretty proactive. It's more than enough. And that stays on top of all maintenance in addition to lubricating things like that. And a lot of that is actually just looking for buildup of dirt. Things that might cause noises or squeaking. You're being proactive in lubricating things to prevent vibration and noise. Not so much because of the concern of keeping it operating and reliable, which I mean, that's obviously the long term goal. But we're really just being proactive and looking for things that could become amusements later to make sure that they stay as reliable and quiet as possible.
Okay, and you said that you recommend quarterly?
Yes, our standard is actually not, that's how we do it. It's just, it's not a choice. It's it's quarterly by every six months. It's actually a heavy full cleaning maintenance. And every quarter is a detailed inspection and lubrication.
And then does your company provide that maintenance or does the owner have to provide it?
We we provide that maintenance on a contract with the owner. And the owner has the option of contracting through us or through our local service provider that is authorized and trained by us. That's have an off new work. So even if we were unavailable, we're out of business in the future or something else. There's a plethora of technicians who are local and available to respond and help maintain the system.
Okay, thank you. So then, I guess that'll bring me back to a question for staff and the applicant.
Commissioner Berman, could I could I ask one other question? I just, because I think it may involve the same individual responding and had to do with. Sort of the conversation we're having about the generator and whether or not a generator can safely be stored onsite. Or, you know, whether what are the pros and cons of that? And in fact, whether or not maybe one of the. Ion batteries that I'm sure I got the title wrong there that Commissioner Godwin had asked about was. Was something that might be integratable into into all this.
Well, any anything is certainly possible. I have been asked that question a ton of times. I do not have a single project that has gone forward with the battery. It'd be interesting to see, but nobody's done it yet. Fairly new technology and pretty expensive for the. Likelihood of needing it for something like this, unless it was a full building wide battery bank or something like that, then that would maybe make sense. Lots of people ask about generators. Very few people, when they look at the actual practicality of how often would I need to use this. Very, very few people actually end up going forward with it. Become more of an issue now with PG needs. Random shutdown of power grid, but historically it's been, it's really been a non-issue that people haven't done it. There is no reason why you, sorry, go ahead.
Maybe I was going the same place you were. I mean, I'm sort of curious about the, nothing in life is free. So what are what are the costs involved in doing something like that so that we can sort of compare it to the relative need?
In a battery system?
Well, I was thinking, let's put the battery system aside, the generator, for example, having a generator onsite.
Well, I either one, I have no idea, honestly. I do all I I do the system, the mechanical system of the parking system. From the power disconnect inward. And so what comes ahead of that, whether it's a generator connection, whether it's a battery, whether it's PGE. Everything ahead of that, I really have nothing to do with, so I couldn't answer that question unfortunately.
I wonder if there's anybody else on the team who could help us sort of understand what would the trade offs would be or the, you know, cost relative to utility?
That's something we want to explore with our engineer, the electrical engineer when we start getting into the details on the project. You know, we talked casually about, as you mentioned, like Tesla Power Wall that would be dedicated to the unit. In case it's needed. But I should add, and Scott can speak to this better than I can, but there's actually a manual. Operation option, however, it requires a technician to come in and lower the. Stackers and it takes a bit of effort and time to make that happen.
Yeah, it sounds like it takes a bit of effort and time to bring in a, to bring in the generator as well. And I just sort of, as was has been noted, we move into a environment where it's perhaps more likely that something like that might be needed. It's just sort of trying to figure out how we address that that need.
Yes, and so I'll confirm what Mark just said is that with this system. It is fairly easy, fairly in quotes, for a technician to show up and manually get cars out one at a time. It's not a push a button and happens, but he can open valves to, you know, release gears, push slide platforms over and get vehicles out one at a time. In the fact, there's a catastrophic failure and power is not available and it's not coming back for some reason. So it's not the end of the world, although it may seem like if power goes out for a week at a time. Then the cost and practicality of a building wide generator system or emergency generator system. Is is something that is worth exploring, but I can't opine on whether it's. Like I really couldn't say. A lot of people talk about it, but I have no idea the actual cost and. Implications of trying, trying to integrate that with the rest of the building.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Commissioner Berman, I hijacked some of that.
No, no worries. That's that's perfect. And actually, that's an important point that I wanted to touch on that I forgot to actually. I guess, is the applicant willing to investigate and pursue a permanent generator at the site?
Yeah, I think it makes sense to explore that option for sure. We have to look at the cost benefit analysis on it. Like I said, it requires a. Another level of study that we haven't quite come to that. Point yet. Brian, do you have something to add?
Yes, actually, we have installed some Tesla jam power wall. That's dedicated for only, because one Tesla power has six kilowatts. And it can store the power from the the solar system, which we is required for the. The project and I think it's. And I think it's, it's very sufficient enough if, in case of a power outage, to use the Tesla power.
So to use the, the solar power, which will be stored in a battery to run the system in the case of emergency?
Yes, and also it use, it uses, use the Tesla power, just in case you install enough power, you can generate power for the light, for the garage, for example, for the, for the common area. And if you use those power, the solar system will generate power to store the, the, the power to the, the power wall again. So it's, it's, it's not a new system, it's just a lot of house use, uses it right now, especially on a hot water system that use a electrical water heater, electrical, a solar water heater that uses those systems too.
Okay. Maybe I guess we could put a pin in that and after questions, we then deliberate on, on the, I guess, how we go forward with the generate, because me personally, I think it's a safety concern. Or it's a more personal property concern. If there's a, an emergency and someone needs to someone, the power went out, someone got hurt and needs to drive to the hospital. But the system is down and it was unexpected and someone can't get to their car to go to the hospital, something like that. That is a major concern for me, so I'd like to put a pin in this and maybe in a few minutes, talk with the fellow commissioners about it. Really quick question, back to the maintenance, the car stacker system. Maybe staff can answer this. Is it possible to incorporate into the conditions that the CCNRs include? I know there's already language for maintenance of the parking, but something a little more specific like include a maintenance manual and regular maintenance checkups quarterly as recommended by the manufacturer or perhaps keeping the, the owner has to maintain a contract with the, the manufacturer for ongoing maintenance during use of the property.
Well, it would seem reasonable to me to include language in the requirements for the CCNRs to ensure that the HOA undertakes maintenance in the manner and interval described in the manufacturer's specifications to ensure proper operation of the stacked parking system. Beyond that specifying entering into certain contracts, I think that's out of my area of expertise and I would defer to Ms. Sharma, whether we can do that.
I would have concerns with that because we would be requiring the property owner to enter into maintenance contracts. What's the enforceability mechanism of doing that? I would just be concerned with requiring a condition of approval that specific at this point.
Okay, then I think the, the former idea that Deputy, Deputy Director Murdock mentioned, just making sure that the, the conditions, and I could skim through the conditions one more time, includes language that the, the HOA needs to maintain regular maintenance in accordance with the, the manufacturer's maintenance manual.
This is, this is Scott from, from Harding, and I'd like to just add a little bit of clarity for how it works in my industry. So generally, we encourage everybody to have, to maintain the system and have a maintenance contract, either with us or with a third-party provider. Just because it's the smart way to maintain things. We do have some con, some owners who get very comfortable with their system who choose not to do that. But in the event there is an issue, the way our, our, our system works, it rolls into basically a time and material. So if we don't have a, any maintenance contract that's, that's in effect and you call us with an issue, we will deploy people on a time and material basis. So we still have technicians available 24 hours a day who can come out and address the issue and get somebody's car unstuck or fix the problem. But we obviously aren't responsible for maintaining that if we don't have a contract, but we still are available.
Thank you. Thank you for that clarification. That, that helps me understand the process because I'm sure this is new for a lot of people in the city. Last question for the applicant. So I, I asked a couple of questions earlier about the Caltrans right-of-way. My landscaping questions were answered. Mr. Ogenin, I think you answered that you have limited planting types that you could put on that slope. And I'm, I respect that. In regards to the striping, can it just be clarified? I know that the COA that Mr. Murdock pointed out identifies that slurry seal and then pavement marking will be redone on both Waterford and Monterey. But I just want to confirm that the applicant intends to slurry seal the full width of the roads and re-stripe the full width of the roads.
Yes, so if you refer to page 216 of the exhibit, this is well, it's actually part of the tentative map package, however, it's the same as in the, the regular civil engineering drawings. So the, our traffic engineer recommended improvements to, to the striping to address that, you know, issue specifically when he did his traffic analysis and also adding, you know, a stop indicator, a stop time location, crosswalk marking as well as arrows and striping along the on-ramp. So, and that's also part of our, I believe, one of the conditions from Caltrans that we do resurface that stretch of Monterey.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Commissioner Big Stick.
I wanted to go back to the idea of electrical vehicles for just a moment and just because I don't know at any given point in time, how many people residing in these units might have electrical vehicles. Maybe the question is for Scott with Harding about whether or not it's even possible to adapt the stackers with some sort of charging capability. But if not, the follow-up question to that will be, and it, it, the point is well taken, there's already two charging stations in there. Simply if there winds up being more households, then those two charging stations will be able to properly address, is it possible to maybe adapt the non-stacker spots with another charging station or two, whether that be at the cost of the resident or whether it be because that's the, the responsibility of the owner? Is that a possibility going forward?
Well, the, the good answer is yes, it is very possible to add charging to the mechanical parking system. We do it all the time. It's simpler than it sounds. So it's just a, it's a pedestal mounted charger that moves with the car and the platform. So every single one of the spaces can have a charger on it.
Okay, so if someone moves in and they want that convenience, it sounds like it's pretty easy to make that happen.
Yes.
Big yay, question answered. Thank you.
No problem.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. I don't see any other hands raised right now. Guess we might be getting to a place where we might want to talk about deliberation or whether there's anybody who is feeling inclined to try to formulate a motion. Commissioner Big Stick.
And I definitely have interest in a power wall, though I'll probably leave that to Commissioner Berman to follow up on. My two, well, one's a quasi-concern and that's the blue stucco. And I, I really couldn't tell from the pictures whether or not it'll be something that adds well to the neighborhood or if it just detracts from the consistency of the building itself. So I, I really wanted to ask the opinion of my fellow commissioners, what they think of the aesthetic of having just one wall with that blue stucco on it. And my other concern again was about the sound on the interior in relation to Highway One, because I think that that, that's going to be a big deal for anybody residing in those units. So if staff can go over with me a, a little bit more in detail how that is going to be addressed and maybe whether or not it might be appropriate to add a COA regarding it to be fully addressed, I'd appreciate that.
Sure, thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. As I mentioned earlier, I'm not the technical expert on the California Building Code, but my working knowledge of this issue is that should this project be approved and moved forward to the building permit phase, that the building code requirements for residential projects of this type, in particular, multi-unit developments like this, are required to provide insulation from exterior noise sources such that acceptable interior noise levels are achieved. It's difficult to prescribe exactly what methods and materials would be needed to accomplish that, but it does require a site-specific assessment of the typical noise environment, in this case, Highway One, the car wash and other, you know, local traffic at the intersection, for example. And so it's my understanding that the building code would require that analysis to be done and that the appropriate materials and methods undertaken to achieve acceptable interior residential noise levels.
Sure, and then my question is for the rest of the commission, how do y'all feel about the blue stucco wall?
Anybody want to weigh in on that?
Is it okay if I add another comment on that?
Please do.
So, yeah, we feel that the color palette, you know, we've got the bamboo, which is a natural material, got the dark gray phenolic resin panel, which is a very durable material in this environment. And the stucco relates to many of the houses within the neighborhood, so that's kind of like a tie-in. And it also identifies the units themselves and it doesn't only occur on the north wall, but if you look at the renderings on 201 of the exhibits. So each of the townhomes has a section of stucco that wraps from within the courtyard area out to the front of the building. So each of those townhomes has repetitive palette of materials that marches around the corner and then turns the corner to become more predominant on the north elevation. So the idea is that kind of create a, a sense of individuality, so it doesn't look so much like a, you know, just a massive and uniform building, but to break up the materiality a little bit, that's the intent of the, the stucco.
And to be clear, that one wall is where, that's the only place you do have that blue going on, right?
No, we have it in the front of the building. If you look at the view from the southeast, this is on page 201.
I'm there with you.
I will share my screen.
Oh, okay, even better.
Yeah. So, you know, we, we tried to give, can you see the screen okay?
I can see the screen fine. I'm still not seeing the blue yet.
There, there's blue right here. Yeah, so, so we tried to identify these as more like individual townhomes, as I'm calling them, just to give a sense, it's not like a, a big housing block, but there's some individuality to each of these units. And then, so facing the, the highway and the on-ramp, we've got a more, we've got a darker palette of materials that are more, you know, resilient or resistant to staining from, you know, the pollution. And then when you get to the more protected areas, which are on the, I guess, the leeward side of the building, then we start to get a lighter palette that opens up and, and starts to be a little bit more in dialogue with the neighbor, neighboring buildings, the neighborhood. And, yeah, just create a, a different kind of feeling. And then when it turns the corner, so if we march down here, we've got these three units, then this corner here turns the corner here and that becomes more of a predominant color. Again, trying to break it up and avoid the stacked housing block look. So that's the intent of just to think of a variety of colors and adding another scale to the building.
Appreciate you explaining that to me because I think that when I was initially looking at the renderings, I thought that was window. And so now that I'm seeing what you did there, I'm a lot more comfortable with there being consistency along all elevations.
Okay.
And that, that definitely makes it a lot easier for me. So thank you. I appreciate that.
My pleasure.
Commissioner Big Stick, this is Commissioner Berman. Just to kind of answer your question, because you're kind of throwing it out to the rest of the commission. I mean, I'm, I'm inclined to trust the, the architectural preference by the design team. I do know that I would, I think personally, I would prefer the blue on that north-facing wall to be blue over the, the dark gray. I feel like if it were dark gray, it would be pretty blocky and, and harsh. I guess, assuming that the color is portrayed correctly in the renderings, I think personally the color is nice. I guess that could be a question to Mr. Ogenin. Is, is the color from your experience, this color, is it accurate to how it's shown in the renderings? Or does it come out bluer or grayer?
It's very close. I would, let me see if I can pull up our materials board. And then I will share my screen.
Yeah, because if it were neon blue, I would, I would advise against it.
Yeah, so it's, it's hard to match it in the, the rendering of the model, but this is a pretty close. Again, every screen resolution is different, but this is the color, the company is called Stowe. And if you would like to look on their website on your monitor, but it's, it's basically this color, which is very similar to the rendering. And this is the palette of materials. We've got a fused bamboo with a wood siding. This is a, it's, it's basically a phenolic resin material mixed with bamboo fibers to create a very durable, you know, long-lasting material that's not going to weather like a natural wood product. Got stucco, this is the blue, this is phenolic resin panel. It's a very sustainable material. It's layers of paper that are pressed under high pressure with phenolic resins. This is the storefront and window material fiberglass. And we've got a nicely textured concrete block to create a softer finish to the base of the building. It's primary material.
Thank you. That's helpful.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin.
Yeah, I just wanted to start with a quick comment. As a former owner of a stucco home, it wasn't that difficult or expensive to change the color of the stucco. So I assume if the residents were really unhappy with it, it could be changed.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin.
And I guess my other question, I didn't see in there, are these houses strictly electric or are they natural gas and electric condos? Question I had for the developer.
Yeah, this is electric. It's all electric. Its gas is being phased out anyway in a number of jurisdictions.
That would certainly make putting in power walls more, more reasonable. That would certainly make putting in power walls more reasonable. And that's about all I had to say.
Thank you, Commissioner Godwin. Commissioner Berman.
I wanted to circle back to the idea of a permanent generator at the site or some insurance that there is a permanent means to operate the car stacker without dependence on everyday electrical from PG&E, for example.
Yeah, Commissioner Berman, I think I would be in favor of, you know, a condition that, insofar as we can impose such a condition anyway, a condition that's spoken that direction. I guess my concern is that if it's ultimately determined that it's just not feasible to implement, then, you know, I wouldn't want necessarily for that to be a showstopper either, but insofar as it's something that could feasibly be integrated into the project, it strikes me as a worthwhile thing for us to to try to get included. Commissioner Big Stick.
Chair, it sounded like the owner has had some experiences with these Tesla power walls. And it seemed like the owner was happy to oblige the idea of having one installed in lieu of emergency power. And so if it is possible to incorporate a condition of approval, I would prefer to do that because I very much share Commissioner Berman's sense of there being a potential for an emergency circumstance otherwise. And there was one other development where I absolutely would have voted yes on it, except that there was only one means of escape. And in a worst-case scenario, I don't think I would have been able to sleep with myself in perpetuity if I had known that I could have prevented an emergency from happening. And so it sounded like the owner was very much willing to go along with the condition of there being that backup source of energy. And I think that having deliberated as we have, I it might be essential for me to vote yes to have that condition there, simply because I can absolutely see a circumstance in which, under worst-case scenario, I would want to know I did everything I could to have saved a life in that moment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments or is there someone who wants to try to formulate a motion?
Chair Nibblin, I would just ask if the commission could have a bit more discussion on the public health and safety and general welfare issue that's going to be addressed by a battery backup power source as compared to a generator power source. I heard concerns potentially about the time involved between the power going out and setup of the temporary generator and any urgent needs to utilize the parking stacker in that interim period. Perhaps there are other public health and safety reasons such as noise that might emit from a temporary generator or lack of a suitable location to install a temporary generator. But it would be helpful, at least from my perspective, to have a bit more discussion as to the basis for imposing that requirement, particularly in light of the cost disparity between the battery backup system and a temporary generator setup, for example.
Yeah, Mr. Murdock, I see where you're going. I guess what I wanted to confirm was Commissioner Big Stick had indicated, and maybe I I'd sort of missed it, that the applicant was actually willing to have integrated into the project a perhaps what you're calling, is it a Tesla power wall? Is that the term that we were using?
Yes, that's one commercial version of the battery.
Yeah, and if that is in fact the case, if the applicants is in fact, and developer is willing to integrate that into the project voluntarily as a condition, then, you know, we may still want to have a little conversation about it, but I think the, you know, the issue may be framed a little bit differently, so maybe that would go back to Mr. Hugh and Mr. O'Jenin for further comment.
Yeah, since this this development is going to be fully electrical power, and we have, it's a requirement for a solar power, I would put Tesla generator in it as a backup. And that way it's much easier not to have a generator. I don't like gas power things anyways. So.
Okay, and just to clarify, Mr. Who, is that something you'd be willing to have incorporated into the project as a condition of approval of the project?
Yeah, that's fine. I plan to install one anyways, so. So it's okay to incorporate that.
Mr. Murdock, is that?
Just confirm, I'm hearing that Mr. Who is revising his project to include a battery backup system sufficient to operate the stacked parking system in the event of a grid power outage, is that correct, Mr. Who?
Yes.
Terrific, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Murdock. Let me sure, anything further we need to deal with on that?
Oh, I'm comfortable, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Godwin, I see your hand up.
Oh, I guess I've had some experience with backup generators and and they're infrequently used and sometimes they don't start, among other problems. And in the other case, a battery backup system, I know I probably spent way too much time on this, they're silent, they're always available, lasts for a decade without basically no maintenance, it's I agree with Mr. Hugh, it's a given that they're reasonably priced now, they're vastly superior technically as a backup power source, it'll be there in an emergency when you need it, not a day later.
Well, it sounds like Mr. Who is as enlightened as you are on the matter, so it looks like we're we're in good shape on that point. Is there any further discussion or any, anybody who wants to hazard a motion on this? Commissioner Ferguson.
I guess real quick question for Scott, since we've agreed to incorporate the Tesla wall pack. Is that a sufficient unit to power this car stacking unit for the amount of time required to say, clear out all nine parking spots? I'd say this because as a resident of the neighborhood, I lose power every winter, at least over one night, sometimes over many. And if I was a resident and knew that there was some chance that I was going to not be able to have access to my car for multiple days, I probably would just park on the street, which is a neighborhood concern for the location.
So Scott had to leave the meeting, but I did speak with him about this prior to this meeting, and so the power requirements for these units is pretty low, it's like a three-phase, I think a 30 volt system, so you know, I think it's something that we have to validate with our electrical engineer. So, you know, ideally we can go with the power wall or something similar, but you know, I think it's going to take a little bit of you know, study to see if it's going to be adequate, but just from preliminary discussion with the parking rep, he felt that the power requirements are fairly low for this type of unit.
If you don't mind me breaking in, I can add a little bit here. The power walls can be wired in series and give you an essentially, if you're willing to pay for it, an infinite amount of power. And you can use inverters to do either three-phase, one-phase DC power that's, you know, it's relatively, you convert from one to another, the requirements of the housing of the system.
Great, thank you. Okay, anything further, commissioners? Commissioner Berman.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Please, go ahead.
Okay, let me make sure I have the right motion.
Okay.
Vice Chair Berman, would it be helpful for me to read back the conditions of approval that the commission focused in on to see if any of them are of interest to you with respect to the motion you're intending to make?
Yes, please.
I heard discussion about condition of approval number 27, including a typo, and maybe should be revised to may be. There was discussion of condition of approval number 18 to ensure that the homeowners association undertakes maintenance in the manner and interval prescribed by the manufacturer specifications for the parking stacker. And then I heard discussion about adding a new condition of approval to reflect the applicant's revision to the project to utilize a battery backup system capable of operating the parking stacker in the event of a grid power outage.
Yes, that matches my understanding. Okay. I move that the Planning Commission finds the project is exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act approves permit for site development PSD-848-20, use permit UP-122-20, parking exception PE-190-20, variance PV-529-20, intensive subdivision map SUB-246-20 by adopting the attached resolution, including conditions of approval in Exhibit A with the modifications provided by Deputy Director Murdock. And incorporates all maps and testimony into the record by reference.
Thank you, Commissioner Berman. Is there anybody who would like to second that motion? Commissioner Big Stick.
I will be happy to second that motion.
Okay, so we have a motion by Commissioner Berman and a second by Commissioner Big Stick. Can we get a roll call vote on that motion, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
And that motion passes unanimously.
Thank you. I'm just going to note that anyone aggrieved by the action of the Planning Commission has 10 calendar days to appeal the decision in writing to the city council. If any of the above actions are challenged in court, issues which may be raised are limited to those raised at the public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. Judicial review of any city administrative decision may be had only if a petition is filed with the court not later than the 90th day following the date upon which the decision became final. Judicial review of environmental determinations may be subject to a shorter time period for litigation, in certain cases, 30 days following the date of final decision. All right, so that then will take us to communications, and we'll start with that commission communications. Are any commission communications this evening? Commissioner Big Stick.
Thank you, Chair. My two communications for the evening. First, as always, please wear a mask. We have a pandemic, this is known, and what is increasingly known amongst communities whom are consistently wearing those masks is that the rate of transmission is significantly lowered, so please keep wearing those masks. It's not the funnest thing in the world to do, but it absolutely pays off for everybody involved. And number two, tomorrow we have a big day coming up, and I just want to remind everyone, please vote, I believe, and maybe city staff can correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe polls are open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. in Pacifica at 2212 Beach Boulevard, as well as St. Peter's on Oddstad. And vote, 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 it's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Big Stick. Commissioner Godwin. Hope you're on mute, sir.
Thank you. I just had a quick note for everybody. I recently had some plumbing issues at my house and had reason to check the water pressure and found out it was 100% higher than it should be, and that's supplied by the city, I mean, applied by the water district. Had a discussion with the water district guys, and they said, oh, that's not so bad, we have houses that have 400% of the pressure that is recommended in the Building Code. And asked them, gee, what are you guys doing about that? And they said, nothing. And had, wouldn't make commitment to do anything. So in my case, I bought a pressure reduction valve for my particular house. Didn't save my water heater any couple thousand dollars with stuff I had to do valves replace, but it will save it in the future. And I suggest everyone go to Home Depot and get their $10 water pressure meter, and if you've got pressure way above 60 pounds per square inch, that you do something similar at your place.
Commissioner Godwin, was that the North Coast County Water District, is that?
Yes, that serves the whole community, I think. And, yeah, I was pretty shocked to see that rather than 50 pounds, which is the nominal normal thing, I was at 110, and they said, eh, we got people well over, well over 200, so.
And thank you.
Just a public service thing.
Thank you, sir. We'll move on and ask a third, any staff communications.
Thank you, Chair. Just two items to note. The Planning Director and Assistant City Manager, Acting Assistant City Manager Tina Waremeister, she'll be taking an update to the city council on the regional housing needs allocation process at the city council meeting on November 9. I know several of the commissioners are interested in that process, and so it'd be interesting to read the report and perhaps to tune into the meeting. And then, as we noted with discussion of the Planning Commission liaison assignments, the city council will be holding a special meeting on Tuesday, November 17 to pick up on the discussion of the Sharp Park specific plan process. The council had a brief discussion on it recently and decided to take some additional time. And so therefore, they've set aside a special meeting for that purpose, so Tuesday, November 17. And thank you again to Commissioner Big Stick for serving as the liaison to that meeting.
Thank you. And by the way, it's probably already been noted, but congratulations on your appointment as Deputy Director of Planning.
Thank you very much, Chair.
Great. I think then that takes us to the next item, which is adjournment. Is there a motion to adjourn? Commissioner Big Stick.
I would like to move to adjourn.
Excellent. Is there someone to second that motion? Commissioner Lille.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. Mr. Murdock, can we get a roll call vote, please?
Commissioner Berman.
Yes.
Commissioner Big Stick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ferguson.
Yes.
Commissioner Godwin.
Yes.
Commissioner Lille.
Yes.
Commissioner Nibblin.
Yes.
Motion passes unanimously.
Thanks, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.